Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Good morning. The Joint Committee of Public Property, Public Works and Technology and Information Services is now in session. Would the clerk plead read the title of Resolution Number 160156?
Resolution Number 160156. A resolution authorizing the Joint Committee on Public Property and Public Works and Technology and Information Services to hold public hearings to review the status of the City of Philadelphia's franchise agreement with Verizon Pennsylvania Incorporated, particularly on Verizon's progress in making cable television service available across the city. Anyone wishing to make public comment at the end of the hearing can see Aaron over here at the table. Thank you.
Thank you, clerk. I'd like to recognize council members that are joining here today. To my left, Councilman Greenly; to my right, Chair of the Technology Committee, Chairman, Councilman Brian O'Neill, Councilwoman Gimm, and Councilman Squillen. But before we begin, I'd like to thank everyone that's here today and participating in this hearing. And I want to thank you all for coming down to see all of us do what we do at government at work. So in 2009, the City of Philadelphia entered into a franchise agreement with Verizon Cable Service and the cable service to the entire city. Throughout the course of the build-out, the franchise area, there were benchmarks that had to have been hit and levels to have to have been met. On February 26th of this year, Verizon fiber service was to be available at 100 percent of the city. As somebody who has deeply been involved in franchise agreements in this city, I know firsthand that a 15-year franchise agreement and the deals such as a Verizon franchise agreement requires constant and consistent open dialogue between the city and the cable provider. My colleagues and I, as well as the City of Philadelphia, couldn't be happier that there are finally competition in order cable service here in the city. The purpose of this hearing today is to ensure that all Philadelphians are truly benefiting from having the option to select their own cable provider and to investigate the status of the Verizon franchise build-out. And that's to investigate the build-out. I look forward to a productive and thorough interaction between the panels in this legislative body today, and I fully expect that outstanding questions we will receive immediate and proper attention by the responding parties so that council can effectively assist the citizens of Philadelphia that they get to receive and receive the level of service that they deserve. With that, I'd like to invite my co-chairman, Brian O'Neill, to make his open remarks.
First, I'd like to thank you, Chairman Hanen, for bringing these hearings about. I may be the only one on either of these committees that was here in '99 when we went through a fairly arduous process of putting this agreement together and this franchise agreement. So anything I can add, I will, and I appreciate the ability to have a joint committee hearing on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and rely on your advice and experience with the highest integrity and consistency. So with that, are there any other members of the committee who wish to make any comments before we begin? Being none, is there anyone from the Administration Office of Information and Technology? Would you please approach the bench and proceed, identify yourself and proceed with your testimony?
Good morning, Committee Chair Hanen and Chairman O'Neill and other members of the Joint Committee. My name is Charles Brennan. I'm the City CIO from the Office of Innovation and Technology. With me is Steve Robertson, my chief of staff. Steve has been involved in this process since the very beginning. I'm here today to provide testimony describing OIT's oversight and monitoring of Verizon's build-out of its cable system here within the city. As you mentioned, Chairman, the cable franchise agreement between the city and Verizon was approved in February 2009. Under the terms of that agreement, Verizon is obligated to make cable service available throughout the entire city within seven years of the effective date of the agreement, subject to certain exceptions set forth in that agreement. The build-out deadline was honored before February 26, 2016. OIT began to actively monitor the company's build-out progress over four years ago. The franchise agreement provides that the CIO may require Verizon to participate in what is called a commissioner's review session. The purpose of these sessions is to discuss any topics that the CIO may reasonably determine to be necessary to ensure Verizon's compliance with its franchise agreement obligations. The first such review occurred in 2012 and focused on Verizon's progress in their build-out. Such reviews continued each year thereafter up to and including 2015. In each of these reviews, OIT concluded that Verizon was in compliance with its build-out obligations that set forth in the agreement. In 2013, OIT concluded Verizon met its four-year benchmark of making cable service available to 45 percent of total households in the city, excluding households subject to an exception under the franchise agreement. In 2015, OIT confirmed that following a short extension of 90 days, Verizon met its six-year benchmark of having cable service available to 85 percent of the total households in the city, excluding households, again, subject to an exemption under the franchise agreement. Verizon met this benchmark after the city extended the due date by 90 days in 2015. In exchange for this, the city required Verizon to provide a $2.6 million letter of credit as performance security and to agree to stringent detailed verification procedures. Both the letter of credit and verification procedures applied to the final completion date of February 26th of that year. It should be noted that no extension was given for the final completion date. The city also required Verizon to support the enhanced verification with a payment of $150,000. Within two weeks of the expiration of the seven-year build-out deadline on February 26th, OIT had its cable consultant, CBG Communications, begin the testing process to verify whether Verizon cable service is now available in all areas of the city as required under the franchise agreement. CBG completed the first round of testing during the week of March 14th. It consisted of both field testing and remote testing of Verizon customer set-top boxes. CBG tested 53 random locations and found that cable service was indeed functioning in those areas. They also did remote testing from a central Verizon location using software to connect to a customer set-top box in randomly selected areas of the city. There were several issues, and OIT is addressing these with Verizon. For example, field testing disclosed that although some multiple dwelling units had Verizon fiber nearby, the MDU itself is not currently being served. Also, during the remote testing of customer set-top boxes, in some cases, no service or signal was detected from the box indicating a potential problem. Tom Robinson, who's the president of CBG, is here today, and he can provide the committee with more details related to testing should you decide to have such questions answered. It needs to be mentioned that as OIT, CBG, and Verizon prepare to undertake the verification of Verizon's build-out, Verizon advised us that there are areas of the city that have not yet been built out for service. With respect to these areas, Verizon claims that circumstances beyond their control have delayed completion of the build-out. In such cases where underlying cause for delay is clearly beyond Verizon's control, the franchise agreement provides an exception to the requirement that Verizon build-out be completed by the deadline. By way of example, causes that contribute to delays. For example, construction delays due to Verizon's inability to obtain authority to access private rights-of-way in the city; Verizon's inability to distribute service in developments, buildings, or areas that are subject to exclusive arrangements with other cable providers; Verizon's inability to obtain access to multiple dwelling units where separate negotiation between the MDU landlord, owner, or governing body is required for the installation of cable service; and delays attributable to the actions or inactions of any government instrumentality, including the city. With respect to this last exception, Verizon did advise OIT permitting delays that have impacted Verizon's inability to complete its build-out in various areas of the city. As OIT continues its verification process to certify Verizon's build-out completion, OIT will assess all claimed exceptions by Verizon and has asked Verizon for a timeline as to when all remaining areas will be completed and cable service made available in those areas. OIT anticipates that if the current labor issues remain unresolved for a long period of time, this will inhibit Verizon's ability to finish their build-out in those areas subject to an exception under the franchise agreement, and this will in turn delay OIT's verification of the completion of the cable system. Chairman, that is my testimony. Should you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer them for you.
Thank you for your testimony. Let me start by, the Verizon franchise build-out was to be completed on February 26th of this year. What is the current status of the certification of that build-out? I know you had mentioned in your testimony that there has been some field testing, but what is the current status?
There were two rounds of testing. One round of testing has been done, and one round of testing has yet to be done, and we are waiting for additional information from Verizon in order to conduct that second round of testing.
So what are the two rounds of testing? You have a field test and you have remote testing. Is that correct? Can you expand a little more on what a field test is, what a remote test is, what are the samplings, and where are they located? How do you pick the bellwether samplings?
I think in order to answer that question, my consultant here, Tom Robinson from CBG Communications, I think he would be better to answer that for you, Councilman.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. Good morning, Councilman Hanen and the rest of the committee. My name's Tom Robinson. I'm president of CBG Communications. We're a consultant to the city. We've been engaged by OIT to conduct verification of Verizon's build as well as other cable-related matters. We set up the testing. We worked with OIT to establish every address in the city, a list of every address in the city, and we developed a random sample of 400 addresses throughout the city in all of the wire centers and all of the council manic districts. From that list, we chose 200 for field testing and 200 for remote testing, again, geographically dispersed throughout the city. We did some stratification of the samples so that the remote testing would focus on areas where we knew that there were already subscribers. We had a list of subscribers from Verizon, and that would allow us to test straight through to the set-top box and actually see what the subscriber's signal performance was. There's really two definitions of system availability. One is availability of the actual system being delivered to a house, to what's called an ONT, which is placed at the side of the house or inside the house, which then takes the signal and distributes it throughout the house for video, voice, and data. And you can get quality parameters off of that, signal-to-noise ratios. You can look at visual signal levels. You can look at a number of things which tell you whether the service is of high quality or not. So we wanted to do that in the remote testing. In the field testing, really what we were looking for was the presence of light at a point at which it could be delivered to a home, and those were one of the randomly selected homes. So in the first round of testing, we basically took the 400 sample. We chose a sample of 400 so we could project. In other words, because it's a random sample, once we get to the end of the testing, we can actually, let's say we have two or three problems of a certain type, we can project based on all, since the total universe was all households in the city, we can project how many of those problems might actually be occurring across the entire city with a margin of error of plus or minus 5 percent. So to get back to kind of the two parts of the field testing, so the remote testing we conduct, and we actually, again, look straight through into the subscriber's set-top box and do some quality parameters, and we did about 100 of those. We found about 11 or 12 with issues. The others were fine. We actually went back the next day and retested those or tested some off of the same hub and found that it must be a box problem, except in two cases, and that's where we've asked Verizon for follow-up information. One where the ONT actually failed, and so we couldn't look through, and we wanted to see whether that was just a maintenance issue or a deployment issue. And another one where there was nothing in that particular area that was actually transferred to the field, that was another MDU complex. Okay, so that's the remote testing. The field testing, again, you're looking at the presence of light. Out of the 153, we're successful. We were able to look at light and look at optical signal levels that would power the ONT and be able to deliver signal to that particular residence, even if that residence wasn't actually a subscriber at that point. They would be able to have service, so that's the service availability part of it. 47 of them, we had questions about, and they broke into two categories, which Charlie had mentioned, related to exceptions. One was where there was no system built at that area, and Verizon indicated that it was due to permitting delays. So we noted all those. That was about half of those 47. On April 8th, Steve sent a five-page letter to Verizon requesting very specific information on each one of those, you know, claimed permitting problems. That's what Charlie was talking about. That's the follow-up we need to do. On the other half, they were largely MDUs, and Verizon indicated in a number of cases that there was a manhole close, that there was fiber in the manhole, but because the manhole was in the street, we couldn't actually get into it at that particular point in time. So there would have to be lane closure permits and those kinds of things. Accordingly, those were set up for follow-up activity as well. So about half of them, we have follow-up, and that's listed in Steve's letter.
Yes, this is for the city. I understand that round one was done. Round two's coming up. All this started after February 22nd, 2016. I know there's, part of this hearing is, what is the definition of whether an exception was met or wasn't met? Because there are exceptions that are in the agreement that permit Verizon to be excused if they have that exception. But we're sitting here after the build-out period requirement is over and we're testing. We were here for seven years prior to this while the build-out was going on. Was there any attempt by the city through itself or a consultant to test during the seven years, even if it was only in the last three or four, given that it may take a few years to really get this up and running from the Verizon side? Can you speak to that, please?
Yes, there was testing last year, and it was, again, a 400 sample. It was done the same way. That was related to the 85 percent benchmark, and we went through essentially the same process. And as Charlie indicated, similarly, the 400, about three-quarters tested with service availability within those areas, and that was within the 85 percent of the city claimed as served by Verizon. So in that case, we're using their list and comparing their address list against the city's list to make sure that it's 85 percent of the census households. And then the other, about 25 percent of the total 400, there were, again, a number of exceptions related to permitting delays and those kinds of things. In each case, those were verified.
Is this, that was the first time?
That was the first time.
At the 85 percent point in 2015?
Yes.
2014 or 2015?
It was last year, 2015, yeah.
Okay. So we waited, we didn't wait seven years. We waited six at the 85 percent point to start testing, particularly what everyone could anticipate. There's going to be a gap between 100 percent and some lower number because of exceptions being, not necessarily met, but letting the city know there's an exception. The city has to test that exception out. So we didn't really get into this until 2015. So even then, when we got involved in 2015, we tried to reconcile whether the exception is valid or not, or, second category, whether the exception is something that the city could be helpful with. In other words, there's things the city can do if somebody's stopping Verizon from building out and claiming an exception and deal with the exception material that's there, whatever it is that's being alleged. Could you speak to that?
Well, I think, and then let me move it back to Charlie. I think the biggest thing that the city noted were the permitting issues, and the city did get involved in that, and I can let Charlie in.
Probably the biggest issue is the permitting issues. And Verizon will probably tell you in their testimony that they submitted permits that they needed permission to kind of dig in the street or micro trench in the street. We've been dealing with streets to try to resolve some of those issues, and I think, again, Verizon will probably tell you in the last couple of months, they've seen a lot more cooperation from the Streets Department than they maybe have had previously. So we are working with them to try to resolve these issues.
So Charlie, since you came in, things are getting better.
I didn't say that.
Thank you.
But I appreciate you saying it.
Okay.
So you had mentioned in your testimony that you're waiting for information for Verizon. What are you waiting for specifically? Because I'll let you know what I'm waiting for for Verizon.
Probably the same thing that we're waiting for, which is a lot of numbers. We have received some numbers from Verizon. They are unverified by the city. So when we get those numbers from Verizon, that is kind of the basis of what Tom here will look at to verify whether Verizon has met its obligation or not. So we are waiting for a lot of numbers.
So what's holding up the verification? There's the relatively, I'm not going to say, so if the entire City of Philadelphia is available for connectivity, right, service, which I am skeptical about, and I'll tell you why, but if we're ready and available and there's a sampling of, you know, 400 addresses to already subscribed services, not new service, right? So not new subscribers, not new neighborhoods, not the underserved, not, you know, some of our neighborhoods who could benefit from having a high-speed access in their neighborhoods that wasn't before. Why has it stopped? Why has the verification stopped? It started in April, all right? They said to me in our meeting, and I'll rehash our, the meeting that I've had with Verizon at the appropriate time, you know, when I met with them in March, they said that the verification process in certifying their information, you know, it's hard to certify information if you have lack of information, but that was supposed to be completed by the end of April, and here we are. So what's holding up the certification or the verification process?
Well, because of the exceptions, there are other areas of the city that have to be built out, and we have to work through those. So right now, because of the workforce, they don't have the workforce available, that work's not being done.
So... So are we saying that Verizon has a lack of workforce in the field so we can certify the availability for all Philadelphia citizens to have competition and high-quality fiber service?
I would guess that's a good reason.
It's an unacceptable reason. It's an unacceptable reason. So for the record... So for the record, you are stating that the lack of workforce or no workforce for high-quality service and competition to all neighborhoods in the city is not being certified because there are no workforce out in the field.
We cannot, we cannot verify that the city's built out 100 percent until we get all the information from Verizon, and our understanding from Verizon is that the work cannot be completed because they don't have a workforce right now.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a lot of questions, but you want to...
The Scots can't do it?
Mark, you want to go? Chair recognizes Councilman Squillen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm a little confused on the legal exceptions. The legal exceptions are what? Is it because of, legal exceptions because of our permitting issues, because the city wasn't working well with Verizon to allow them to do it? What are the actual legal exceptions?
There's actually a number of exceptions built right into the franchise agreement. I read out a couple of them, but Steve Robertson, my chief of staff, maybe he could go over them in a little more detail.
And when you do the detail, what, the actual, I guess, number of exceptions can lead to, because 100 percent is supposed to be 100 percent except for exceptions. I mean, can you have 50 percent worth of exceptions throughout the city? I mean, that's what we're trying to get at.
No, you're actually right. It is 100 percent except for the exceptions. That is what the deal is.
But, point of information, point of information, point of information. First, as Chair, I want to recognize Councilman Tom joining the committee here today. Thank you, Councilman, for being here. If I may clarify, I mean, really, except for the exceptions, I mean, that's how, you know, ridiculous this all sounds. I mean, there are exceptions. Can you explain the three exceptions that there are in the franchise agreement and what they are? And, all right, in addition to that, have you received all the information and the different sets of information for each of those exceptions? So there's MDUs, there is private right-of-way exceptions, and there's permit exceptions. Could you go in details with each one? And if you received the information for, we'll start with MDUs. What is an MDU? All right? And have you received all the data sets regarding an MDU from Verizon?
I'll let Steve talk about the exceptions, but we have not received all the data yet.
Well, how are we going to certify if you haven't received the data?
Well, that's exactly the issue. Is we have not received all the data, so we cannot certify what Verizon, the Verizon numbers that they give us, we cannot certify, the city will not certify those numbers until we get all the data.
And I don't want the city to certify any numbers on 100 percent build-out without the information.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Councilman.
I would not want the city to certify any build-out at 100 percent without the information still being requested for the city to certify.
We agree.
Steve, can you, Steve, if you could clarify the three exceptions, I mean, I believe there are three exceptions, and could you go into detail for each one, MDU, and then give the detail? And again, I think Charlie, you know, very simply stated that, you know, we don't have the information. Could you explain each one, one, two, three, and/or if there's four, and what it means, and if you have all the information necessary? And if not, what are you waiting for if it's not confidential?
Sure. Again, Steve Robertson, chief of staff at Office of Innovation and Technology. The three examples in CIO Brennan's testimony are very specific exceptions within franchise agreement. There's also a much broader exception. It's known as the force majeure clause. Anything outside of Verizon's control that impacts their ability to complete the build is something that they can notify the city of. An example of that would be the permitting delays. The permitting delays are outside of Verizon's control. They did invoke a force majeure, the force majeure provision with respect... They did invoke a force majeure, the force majeure provision with respect to that in the permitting delays. So, that's one example of a general broad category exception. The specific exceptions in the franchise agreement, the ones that CIO Brennan mentioned in his testimony. There can be construction delays with respect to access. A very specific example of that is Verizon will need to get authority from private homeowners to access portions of their property. That can impact a row of homes if that property owner is on either end of a row of homes and refuse to allow Verizon access for construction purposes. So, that's an example of what's known as a private right-of-way exception. There are also developments within the city where Verizon may have to negotiate or discuss with homeowners organizations, other entities that oversee or govern access to those developments to provide service. A good example is a homeowners association or a condo association. Verizon would need to approach them about access to the development. They would need to coordinate their build in that development, and that's one of the specific exceptions in the franchise agreement. With respect to multiple dwelling units, which is probably the more common exception, in each of high-rise, which is also, you know, multiple dwelling unit, say, a building with 100 residents in there, oftentimes, if not in every case, Verizon will have to negotiate separately with the landlord or other governing organization of that building to get access to the building to provide service. Within the MDU exception, there are kind of subcategories of exceptions, and that would be, an example of that would be, they're nearby, but nobody in the building's requested service yet. So, when CIO Brennan mentions that we're waiting for information, what we're kind of waiting for now, and that exchange of information hasn't stopped, by the way. That is still an ongoing process, and we consider that to be part of the verification process as well. So, it's not that we've come to a complete halt. I think when we say that the verification process is at a kind of a standstill, it's more with respect to the actual field inspection and the testing in the field and the remote testing. So, we're still in the process of exchanging information with Verizon. It makes sense that that information gets exchanged now when the deadline for 100% availability has passed, because it's kind of difficult to kind of crystal ball it when you're at the other interim benchmarks, because the assumption is now that the deadline has passed, 100% of the city's built out, Verizon can assess their actual numbers and provide that information to us with respect to the exceptions and with respect to the entire build.
I have some questions to that, but I'm going to recognize Councilwoman Gim.
Hi, good morning. So, one question I have for Mr. Brennan is specifically, what do you see the city's role being in terms of execution of the Verizon contract? What do you think your role is?
Our role is to verify that Verizon has lived up to the terms of the franchise agreement, which is to provide service to 100% of the city of Philadelphia.
And if you say that you're unable to verify because Verizon doesn't give you that information, what then becomes your role?
Well, under, again, going back to the terms of the franchise agreement, as long as it's, as long as they have a reason for not giving us that is explicitly stated, we have to work through that. So, sooner or later, we will get all the information that we need.
And I guess my question is, is given the fact that you seem to not be able to ascertain what exactly are the exceptions, we're already detailing troubles even within the addresses that we have, and those you haven't gotten information for, what is your role?
Our role right now is to work with Verizon to see what exceptions they claim and to see if we can verify that the exceptions are legitimate. And one of the big exceptions, as Steve has mentioned, is the permitting issue with streets. So, we're working with streets to work through the permits to see, you know, to verify that Verizon's claims that they cannot get to certain locations are in fact valid.
So, then what is the plan to get the audit done after the labor issues are resolved?
As soon as, as soon as the labor issues are resolved and Verizon gives us all the numbers, then we will, again, go back to CBG Communications and have them finish the verification process.
So, you're allowing the labor issue to prevent you from ascertaining what Verizon is being able to do?
Well, I'm not allowing it. It is in fact occurring.
But you are, you are allowing that to be an exception that was not previously stated?
It is in fact an exception.
That labor issues are an exception that allows Verizon not to deliver on its information to the city?
Yeah. It's a force majeure issue under the franchise agreement. Verizon has so notified us of that.
One of my concerns has been with city departments, and particularly when it comes to access issues for the rest of the city of Philadelphia, is that too often you become tools of the corporations that are working on this issue. The labor issue for Verizon has been only within the last, we've had seven years of this agreement, and I guess what I'm struggling to understand, what I'm struggling to understand is why the city governments allow themselves to be blocked and diverted and not get answers to. Do you feel like you have any, we have a contract with a company. It was clearly delineated and promised. There are exceptions that are willing to be had, but there are lots of problems that we are seeing that go beyond some of these things that are being created, and I don't understand what you think your role is when you feel like you can be stymied so quickly and easily.
Counselwoman, I take exceptions to your comments that we are somehow a pawn of Verizon. That is not true. We are, we are absolutely following the terms of the franchise agreement. That's a contract between the city, with the city, and we are following that contract.
But I don't, what do you think, if you can't get data from Verizon, why is that an impossibility for you? This isn't like, this isn't asking the impossible here. There is data, there is right to request, there's Freedom of Information Act, there is data that is available. What is the problem with the data?
Because in any contract, there are exceptions to every contract, and the exceptions, the exceptions now are dictating why we cannot get the data. We will eventually get the data, and we will objectively look at the data, and we represent the city. We don't represent Verizon or anybody else. We represent the city of Philadelphia, and the reason we are here is to do what's best for the city of Philadelphia, the same as all of you.
Well, my only comment is, is that we're still waiting for that.
So, sooner or later, and I understand you can do what you can do if Verizon doesn't have people to verify because, you know, they're on strike. So, we're holding up the city because of lack of information. And my concern with the lack of information is, this is, you know, my concern for the city of Philadelphia, and I know you represent the city of Philadelphia, and you represent it well, and you do a very good job, you know, but the city council is very, very concerned with the lack of information, the lack of availability, the lack of access for all Philadelphians for fair competition. And in the true essence of sooner or later, waiting for information, I have here a Verizon FIO implementation report from New York, and they waited deliberately, Verizon, in the report, deliberately withheld information for a year, and now there's a year of remediation and violations to make up what they did. So, there is a history. There's a history. So, if it looks like a duck, it walks like a duck. So, I just want to point, I just wanted to point this out and use it as a reference. If you could take a look with, with history and how it, we don't want it to repeat itself here in the city of Philadelphia. If you can, you know, take a look at that at your leisure, because that's a concern. Back on the exceptions and the numerous requests for information from the MDUs, private right-of-ways, and permits is, and I'm going to ask these questions of Verizon, because I'm not sure what their attempts, have they provided to you, the city, what their process for attempts? I know there's three times for follow-up. Have they provided that information? We have, you know, in the MDUs or private right-of-ways, we have notified these homeowners, these condo associations, these multi-dwelling units, you know, multiple attempts. So, out of the thousands of exceptions they may have, is it broken down? And is there somebody, well, obviously, there's nobody to, you know, give you any information, but do, will they, once they resolve their, if they resolve their strike issues and they put people back to work, Philadelphians, will they be able to provide information or somebody that's in charge at a processes? There's somebody specific that you know of, that you're coordinating with Verizon that is making these attempts and following it through? Because I don't get a sense of that.
Yes, Chair. There are individuals in Verizon, and some of them are in the room today, and you'll hear from them, but they, we are, as recently as this week, in discussions with Verizon about getting the information, the very information that you spoke about. That includes a breakdown of all the categories within the kind of MDU exception that would indicate, as you mentioned, that will indicate where they've gone, and they've tried this three-attempt process with a landlord for an MDU. That documentation we've asked for, Verizon has committed to providing it, and that's been in discussions right through this week.
With all due respect, you know, I had a meeting in my office with Verizon March 18th, and, you know, was expecting to get the information from them then. They had it available, and here we are at the end of April, when the, you know, the completion of the verification process was supposed to be finalized, and the city still hasn't. You know, let alone myself, who in good faith asked for the information, it was told that the information is available, all right? The city doesn't have it yet. So, you know, still waiting, still waiting, still waiting, ends up in a New York report. I guess it's going to just change the name to Philadelphia Report Audit. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell, or wants to recognize that Councilwoman Blackwell has joined us here today. So, one of the permitting issues, and I'm going to ask Verizon again when, when they're up, the permit issues, I know there were some outstanding permits, you know, issues for, I think, for some time, you know, but when I met with Verizon in March, I think they narrowed it down to under 50. So, permitting issues shouldn't be holding up a 100% build-out of the franchise. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, and I don't think that permitting issues are holding up, quote-unquote, 100% build-out, but it is impacting and affecting a certain amount of properties within the city.
Okay. Are you aware of any work being performed on a franchise agreement right now? On a build-out?
I can't say that I'm aware, but that's not to say that it's not happening. I think Verizon would be better suited to answer the question.
Is there any other questions that the committee has for OIT? Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Good morning. I just want to make sure I understand the issue. We signed a contract supposed to be completed by March of this year?
Yes.
And what, February? Okay. And in your opinion, what percentage of that contract is completed and what percentage is not?
I don't think, I don't think we can answer that. I don't think we know.
But if we've signed a contract, hang on a second. If we've signed a contract, we need to find that answer out so we know where we are in the contract.
Right. I think you're coming in a little bit late, Councilman, is we are waiting for final numbers from Verizon, and when we get those final numbers, that's what we need to verify whether Verizon...
Wait a second. If the contract was due the end of February...
Right.
Why have we not gotten that answer? And any, in the business world, that would not be tolerated. I'm not picking sides. I just want to get all the facts, and from the city's perspective, if we signed a contract and it was due in February, we need to have that answer, and you guys need to tell us what that is. And so, when you have to tell me now, when can you get us that information?
That's what we're in the process of doing now. I mean, we're a month away from the deadline for the build completion.
So, can you give me a date when we'll have that information?
I can't, I can't give you a definitive date, but we, the city is not going to wait forever, obviously.
No, but if we don't set a date, it's not going to, set a goal, set a date, and let's get it done. I'm just trying to get a solution here, you know, to get this resolved, so we don't have to have everybody in this room complaining. We need to resolve this, because it's not right. We signed a contract, this is contract law. We can't do this stuff. This needs to be resolved. So, can you tell us in a week if we'll have this answer?
No.
I don't want to get there. You got to give me a date. I don't want to leave today unless I have a date when we're going to have an answer on this issue.
I can't give you a date.
Okay. Thank you. Can we agree to four weeks? Four weeks from today? Is that enough time for you to give us the information? Four weeks from today?
We can say this, we will do as much to verify the completion of the build that we can based on information that we get from Verizon, but the city is reserving the right, as it should at this point, to continue the field inspections and to make sure that service is available. When that can resume is an unknown right now due to the labor dispute.
But let me just say, if we were in a contract for seven years, we should have been monitoring that contract every year or every three months or every six months, and we could say today we're 85 or 90%, whatever the number is, you monitor the work.
We do have that information. In 2015, the city verified that Verizon met a benchmark of 85% of the city being built out. So, we did do that verification in 2015. Prior to that, going back to 2012, you know, three years into the agreement, OIT was actively monitoring Verizon's progress in build, and has every year since.
But you understand if we committed to a contract, it's reasonable for us to know when this is going to be completed, and I don't think we can say to the residents or the people of our city, we don't know when it's going to be done. It's an unacceptable answer.
Yeah, but I think also, given the nature of this contract, that it involves building out a network across the city, it requires a physical inspection. So, if the build was to be completed on February 26th, the city is not going to know on February 26th that 100% of the build is done. It's going to take some time to verify the build.
I'm not arguing that, but here's my, my point is then come back to us and say we need another six months, but set a date specific and perform to the date. That's all my question is. We can't just go on infinitum. We need to have specific dates and goals.
And I can tell you this, I will offer that the city had a timeline of about two to three weeks to do field testing and remote testing until that testing was interrupted. We got halfway through, and now the testing's been interrupted.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think you're, I think you're moving in the same direction.
Right. Thank you for your testimony and question. We, if you, you can hang around to the end of the hearing, you know, I'm sure we'll be bringing you back and forth. At this time, I'd like to call up Verizon and its full team here.
So, for clarity...
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gim.
If I could just pivot a little bit on Councilman Dom's request to OIT, I don't expect OIT to maybe give you or us what Verizon's going to do. You know, that, that's not what we're asking our city government to do. I'm asking you, at the end of February 16th, where are we at? What is the gap that Verizon has not delivered on so that we're clear of where we need to go? You should at least be able to give us a status of everything that has not been delivered to OIT as of yet. And for clarity, I never said the word "pawn," but I did say that sometimes our city governments fail to understand... fail to understand what they should be doing to exercise their power, to be in the best interests of people. And I think that one of the failures that sometimes some of our city governments can get into is that they think that they have to wait for the corporate entity to tell them where they're at, when it is our responsibility fundamentally as a government to tell the corporate entity, this is where you're at, not they tell us where they're at. We tell them. We tell them, at the end of seven years, when this contract was delivered against 100 percent viability and verification on this delivery, this is where you are at. That is the responsibility of O I T. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you. Welcome. Please state your name for the record and begin with your summarized testimony, please. And I know you have submitted full testimony through the record, and it's been circulated to all members. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Heenan and O'Neal, and members of the Joint Committee. My name is Doug Smith, Vice President of State Government Affairs for Verizon, and I'm accompanied by Danielle Lasky, Verizon Manager of Network Operations and Engineering, and representatives from our franchise negotiating team, Paul Train and Brendan Pinkard from Kirby Harrington Pinkard. On behalf of Verizon, we would like to thank the Joint Committee for providing us with this opportunity to discuss the status of Verizon's performance under its cable franchise agreement with the city, and more specifically, Verizon's satisfaction of its cable service deployment obligations to the city and its residents. We would also like to thank O I T and the Law Department for their professionalism and fairness while conducting their diligent and rigorous oversight of Verizon's compliance over the course of the last seven years. We look forward to providing additional details and responding to questions from members of this Joint Committee, but let us at the outset state firmly and proudly that Verizon is fully poised to demonstrate that it has met its obligation to deploy its FiOS cable television service to residents throughout the entirety of the city of Philadelphia. Verizon's completion of this significant milestone means that for the first time in the history of this great city, Philadelphia residents in every neighborhood of the city have a competitive choice. Television services delivered over the only all-fiber network in the city. In addition to creating a competitive marketplace for the provision of cable television, Verizon's construction of its innovative all-fiber-to-the-home network has enabled Verizon to also provide the city of Philadelphia with advanced high-speed broadband services, applications, multi-service bundles, and infrastructure which, while not covered under the cable franchise agreement that is subject of this hearing, have helped to bridge the digital divide and provided this city with 21st century, future-ready network it deserves. Verizon takes great pride in this unprecedented accomplishment and is grateful to the city of Philadelphia for its partnership in this effort, and for granting Verizon the opportunity to serve its residents now and into the future. Verizon's deployment status is currently under an ongoing verification review by O I T and the Law Department pursuant to the franchise and implementing procedures dictated by those agencies. O I T and the Law Department have, since Verizon's first deployment benchmark occurred in 2012, regularly reviewed Verizon deployment maps, met directly with Verizon engineers, conducted field tests in which Verizon engineers visited statistically significant samples of households throughout the city with O I T and the Law Department, in order to verify the availability of cable service and perform remote tests of Verizon databases, which provide detailed information and metrics concerning the availability and status of cable service to city residences. As a result of this comprehensive review, O I T and the Law Department certified that Verizon met the equitable deployment benchmark in 2014, which was an objective test that ensured that Verizon's deployment was being conducted fairly across all income levels in the city, and separately certified in 2015 that Verizon had deployed service to 85 percent of city residents. At this stage, Verizon, O I T, and the Law Department are engaged in the final verification process whereby those agencies will formally confirm whether Verizon has completed its deployment obligations with the respect to the remaining 15 percent of households citywide. The final verification process is to be conducted in two phases, with the first phase having been successfully completed in March, and the second phase to be scheduled, hopefully in the near term, taking into account current resource limitations for Verizon. Upon completion of that review, those agencies will issue a report or summary of its findings, which Verizon is confident will conclude that Verizon has met its commitment under the franchise. In closing, again, Verizon's very proud of the historic accomplishment it has been able to achieve in the city of Philadelphia, and Verizon applauds the city for creating an environment that fosters competition, innovation, fairness, and choices for its residents. Verizon is truly grateful to have the opportunity to serve Philadelphia, and we look forward to our continued partnership with the city to ensure that city residents have access to Verizon's leading-edge technology, infrastructure, and services. With that, we are prepared to answer any questions that members of the Joint Committee may have. Thank you again for the opportunity to appear before you to serve the city of Philadelphia.
Thank you. Thank you for, thank you for your testimony, and, you know, we're going to ask, I'm sure, a lot of the same line of questioning that we asked O I T. So, the Verizon franchise agreement build-out was to be completed February 26th. All right, what is the current status of the certification build-out?
Current status of the certification is a two-phase certification, as you heard from O I T and City Legal. The certification, Phase One, was complete. Phase Two has been interrupted due to the labor strike.
Okay.
What's important to understand is that the field testing requires the use of our union labor force.
So the field testing requires what?
Sorry?
Can you repeat that? Your field testing requires...
Requires the use of our union labor force.
Okay. So, so you don't have, you don't have a, you don't have a workforce?
We currently have management employees filling in for our union labor.
Okay. Okay, so, so when were the certification inspections to take place?
I'm sorry?
When were the inspections to take place? Currently, all month, the month of April? I know you were saying they were interrupted. What was Verizon, what was the timeline for the inspections?
The original schedule, and I'll look to our other folks, I believe, was late April, early May.
State your name for the record.
My name is Paul Train, representing Verizon, Pennsylvania.
Could you move your microphone a little closer, please? It's Fred Astana, for us, and so we can all hear you.
Mr. Chairman, as we indicated when we met with you in March, the testing was expected to take place soon after we met with you and continue until late April, early May. And I just want to be clear, Mr. Chairman, we delayed further field verification out of respect for the unionized workforce. If it's your direction, if it's your direction and the administration's direction to keep going, we offer to do that, and we'll commence on Monday.
How many, so, let me, let me, since you brought it up, let me rehash and review the meeting that we had in March, March 18th, to be specific. All right, so you stated that the build-out was 100 percent at that time, minus the exceptions that you're claiming, and we're still unclear on the, on the exceptions, and, you know, we'll get to that in a little bit. You, I asked about the permit issues, you know, there was some delays for some time. My question on the permit issues, there's going to be several, and, but at that, at that time, you know, our meeting, you said that there were, it was under 50. Then I asked Verizon for a list of the exceptions that you're claiming by site and details. How many contacts have they made for the M D U's? How many calls from a single site? Is there somebody specifically assigned for Verizon that's responsible for that process? And have you had that documented, and will you provide that not only to myself, to the city, O I T, so O I T can do their job? And I think they're anxiously waiting to do their job. I asked for Verizon for a map to show us where the exceptions are taking place and how much of the city that is not connected. And to date, we haven't received any of the following, any of the follow-up information for anything, not one, one request that I have made and asked politely, and I thought the meeting went well, but here we are at the end of, of the end of April, going into May, we don't have a certification process and field testing completed. I don't have any of the information, and from what I hear from O I T, they have lack of information and lack of, you know, data, all right, so they can continue on verifying connectivity for all Philadelphians, for competition in the value service.
Mr. Chairman, maybe I was at a different meeting, but I don't recall you making those requests, but...
So, so, so my, so my personal notes and my staff's notes in a meeting with you and your team...
And again, maybe I wasn't...
That seems to be very specific. You're saying that didn't take place?
In terms of the information you've requested, that you just noted, we'd be more than glad to provide it, as it relates, as it relates to the information, as it relates to your specific question about M D U's in the process, Verizon sends certified letters to landlords and property managers, does that three times. We've provided all of that information to O I T. And it's important to remember, Mr. Chairman, that what the city's verifying right now is the final 15 percent of the build. It already certified the 85 percent with field verification, with all the information that we've provided over the years. And as it relates to where the build stands, we provided a build report through the end of January to O I T. We have provided consistently information on a monthly basis with O I T for a period of a year. So they have the information, and we've provided information to them, and if for some reason there is additional information they need, we will provide it.
Well, it sounds like they've been requesting additional information. Between February 26th and today, has the number of exceptions claimed fluctuated at all?
Meaning, I don't...
Meaning, meaning the exceptions, the M D U's, the private right-of-way, the permits, have, have they fluctuated?
No.
The number of exceptions fluctuated?
The only thing that has, has decreased is the number of permits that we've been working with the new administration with, and that's progressing, but there are a number of permits still outstanding, far more than the 50 you indicated, but a lot of permits still existing, but as Charlie indicated, we're working with them.
You indicated, for the record, not me.
No, I never said the number 50, Mr. Chairman.
In that meeting.
Mr. Chairman, it should be noted that we, we had considerable delays with, we had considerable delays with permits from the Streets Department, but under the new administration and under Commissioner Carlton, there's been a renewed focus, some new programs, and a real dedication of his resources to release those permits, so we're looking forward to seeing a wave of permits released so that we can work them.
Now, how many outstanding permit exceptions are you, are you claiming?
Hi, Mr. Chairman, I'm Danielle Lasky. I'm representing Verizon from the operations and engineering side of the corporation. As of today, as of the end of the build, we had looked at 27,000 households that were being held due to permitting issues. We have been working cooperatively with the Streets Department, and as Doug mentioned, you know, they had a system upgrade that has allowed the permits to flow much more easily to the corporation. In the first quarter of 2016, the city has released 78 permits to us. All of those have been moved into action with our Contract Services Department, and we are executing on the conduit build-out for each one of those. As the conduit completes, we will work to adjust our engineering drawings and release those prints to our construction counterparts so that we can build those portions of the city.
So those 78 permits that have been released and are being executed, are they, they're working, they're working on the franchise, on the build-out right now?
That I can't comment on. That's part of our Contract Services Department, and I'm not sure if they are continuing that work at this time. But we had released it to them in the March timeframe, and work had commenced.
Do you want to be recognized real quick? Do you have a couple of questions? Chair, I have a lot of follow-up to that, and Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Chairman Heenan. I want to follow up on the chairman's request for the map. I think it's a great idea. My question to you is, is that something you can produce for us, a map of the city of Philadelphia, that shows where service is and where service isn't?
My name is Brendan Pinkard, on behalf of Verizon. We have provided maps to council members in conjunction with O I T in the past, particularly Councilman Kenny in 2012, when he called for a hearing. We'd be happy to do that with any member of the Joint Committee. We would not disclose a map showing or illustrating the exceptions in a public forum because of competitive concerns, specifically giving essentially a roadmap to our competitors as to where we're having difficulty gaining access. But we'd certainly, we'd certainly welcome any member of the council...
So can you send that to the chairman, and he'll distribute it to us? The current, I like to know currently in the city of Philadelphia, if I'm living in the city, where do I not have service from Verizon?
Yeah, we'd be more than happy to work with O I T and any member of council to review that information.
So I'm requesting that you send a copy of the map to the chairman of this committee. Can you do that?
Does, does the panel understand that question? Because I requested it before. I just want to make sure. I just, I just want to make sure, and I understand there's confidentiality in, as you stated, competition. I just want to make sure we're on the same page, because I did ask for this in March, and another council member is asking for it now. So if you could provide that to me, I would appreciate it, in confidential, you know, in a confidential manner.
Yeah, again, with respect, we'd be happy to provide that information, provided that it's under confidential cover.
I just want to understand your business a little. When you don't have service in a certain area, is that because the lines haven't been run in the street? Is that the issue?
In some cases, in some cases, Councilman, that is correct. In some cases, we have not had the ability, due to either private easement or public right-of-way access, to run our fiber optics to those homes. In other cases, specific to the multi-dwelling units, we have actually placed our fiber optic cable, designated specific fibers for those specific buildings, and should we receive an inquiry from those properties, as well as a signed premise access license to access the interior of the property, we then can provide the service there.
And do you think that's been the number-one reason why we're not at 100 percent? What is the reason why we're not 100 percent?
I don't think that there's a single reason. As has been discussed, there are several categories of exceptions, among them being access to public rights of way, in this case, it's been largely permits, access to M D U's, in other words, obtaining permission from the landlord or property owner to install facilities in that property, and then private rights of way, obtaining easements across private property. So I don't, I don't think you can, can single out a particular exception.
And can you give me a date when you think we'll be at 100 percent?
No, it would be impossible to do that, given the myriad of factors involved that Verizon does not control. For instance, in the private right-of-way situation, there are thousands of properties where Verizon would have to individually get access approval from those properties. With respect to the permitting...
Right.
...exception, we've agreed with O I T that as those are released, we'll work on a schedule to complete construction to those properties, because those, we, they are within the control of the city, and Verizon can better manage that.
Right. But in our contract we signed seven years ago, it did set a specific date. Did that contract say, the kind of language you're talking about, providing, we can get all these permits and everything else?
That's exactly what it says. It's service availability obligation, subject to the enumerated exceptions. And I want to make clear that the exceptions in the Verizon franchise are... And I, I want to make clear that the exceptions in the Verizon franchise are typical franchise agreements across the country and in fact are almost identical to the exceptions in the Comcast agreement that was approved by council in December of 2015.
So you bring up an interesting point, the Comcast agreement. Comcast has service, I guess, in 100% of our city? Is that correct?
Correct. Subject to their exceptions, but they, they built out in a, in a environment, a monopoly environment in 1984, so...
I see. So it was easier when they did it, you're saying, versus today?
Well, I think the exceptions remain the same irrespective of when you build out, but the point is they've been here since 19, you know, roughly 1984, 85, so...
But this can be done. If they have 100%, you guys should be able to do 100% too, I think, right?
Well, I, I, I don't know where you're getting the 100% figure from. I don't know that they're 100%. In fact, I'm assuming that they're, that they have invoked exceptions under their franchise as well and they certainly have the right to.
I'm going to tell you one personal story because I happen to be in the real estate business also. And I had a building, they call it the Allison Building, I think I mentioned this to you guys, it took me forever, because I had one resident in a building of 19 units I developed above Barnes and Noble on the square, Red House Square. It took me forever to get Verizon into that building and it was a workout. So I'm just mentioning this from a customer service standpoint, it might be something you guys should improve.
Thank you for your testimony. Thank you. Chair recognizes Chairman O'Neal.
I have a question on the MDU. I've been hearing this for a long time, since FIO started coming into the city. Ask somebody, do you have FIOs or the, you know? No, no, we have Comcast and we're not allowed to let FIOs come in because we have an exclusive deal in our condo association or whatever it is with, with Comcast. Is that permitted? Can either company shut the other company out by contract? It seems to me that would be against public policy. It's also against offering the opportunity for these people to work on a place that should be open to them. So can you explain a little more about that? And also, the part of, that exception part, MDU's the first one, how much of this is MDU, multifamily where you can't get in, or at least that's what you're alleging, and I don't know how we check that. I'm going back to OIT now. How we check that? Because there should be full competition in multifamily, the same way there's full competition in single family.
Excuse me. Mr. Chairman?
That's an answer.
Okay. Can you answer the question real quick and then we will have to take a five-minute recess for another committee to do its, its business and then we'll reset.
We don't need a recess, they just need a break for a second.
Okay. We're going to take a minute break. Hold on for a second on your answer. Don't go anywhere, stay right there.
They have to, they have to, they just have, they just have to make the mistake.
Yeah, go ahead.
Wouldn't the federal government...
I go, I fear it.
Good, special.
The bird is a disability.
Yeah, I would just go ahead on the mic.
as well. We are now going to resume our Joint Committee of Public Property and Information Technology. Chair recognizes again Councilman O'Neal for the follow-up to his question.
Yes, I just want to get an answer. And Councilman Squillough was saying during the break that, you know, are there monopolies permitted under these franchise agreements? And it really gets broader than just this one. But since you're here, could you give me an answer? One, on the monopoly question, I don't care which one you answer first, or the competition question, competitive question. And the second is, how much of these exceptions as a percentage are under the MDU exception?
So Chairman O'Neal, Verizon shares your sentiment regarding the need for competition in, in general and particularly in, in multi-dwelling units. And Verizon works very hard to gain access to all multi-dwelling units in the city. They've, they've gone to great lengths to, to get into these buildings. You are correct in your suggestion that a monopoly in the MDU setting is prohibited under federal law, what are typically known as exclusive access agreements were prohibited by the Congress several years ago. Unfortunately, the practical effect of that has not eliminated the, the presence of a single provider in MDUs because exclusive marketing agreements are still permissible. So in many situations, landlords have essentially a financial incentive to keep only one provider, the one with whom they've negotiated that agreement. And so that is not a true monopoly, but it effectively precludes Verizon's ability to gain access. In other circumstances, landlords may not be responsive to Verizon's request to gain access because every resident of their building already has access. So it's not the same circumstance as when Comcast initially built out and there was, there was a motivation to make sure that all the residents had cable access.
Okay, now, basically you said this is still a major issue.
Yes, yes.
One, federal government says you can't do it. The other side, the federal government said, but there's a way around that.
Correct.
Through a marketing agreement.
Correct.
Okay. And then there's, you know, we already have Comcast, so we, we don't want to be bothered, you know, that kind of thing. And I think the city should have some involvement in that, but that's not for today. For today, how much of the exception, not built out, but counting as a built-out because of exceptions, how much of that percentage, what percentage of that percentage is MDU? Multifamily?
I'd say roughly 10% of total households in the city would, would be comprised of MDU exceptions.
Okay, so 90% are permitting, can't get on premises because somebody's stopping you or they haven't, the city hasn't given you a permit. And is anybody going to comment on the issues that involve the city? Is anybody here from the Streets Department? Because if you don't give all the, you, not you, but Verizon doesn't give all the proper information on a permit request and doesn't get back to the city quickly and it sits somewhere, that, that follow-up by the city, who does that count against? Does that count against Verizon or does it count against the city? I mean, the city's done everything they could. They've asked for information. This isn't OIT, this is Streets Department. So I don't know how, you know, how deep we're going to dig into this 90%, which are these two other areas. But it could be substantial. So I, I think there's a lot more devil in the details here than we may be able to come up with today, but we have a roadmap maybe to getting to the devil. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, I think that's a, and I'll allow you to answer that. I just want to make a statement. I think that's a well-pointed-out question, you know, what percentage of the permits had lack of information or wrong information and if, if there was, and any. So we will be asking, I will be asking the Streets Department in the, the permits that have been sitting around, you know, whether it was a delay or permits that were backed up, was there lack of information and how long they were sitting, for what reason? So I'm going to request that the Streets Department get back to the chair and I'll make sure that all members of council or, you know, have the answer to that question. No, go ahead.
Historically, the issue with respect to the permit approvals has not been one that is the result of lack of information from Verizon or incomplete applications. Historically, it's just simply been delays or lack of approval. As was noted previously, that, that backlog has improved in 2016 and we're working cooperatively with OIT and the Streets Department and have been for several months now to work through the delayed permits, get them approved and get them built. Verizon has provided OIT with a list of all the permits that have been filed and that have caused delays, with details about when they were filed and any follow-up information that has been exchanged between Verizon and the Streets Department. And additionally, has provided a map which shows, which illustrates everywhere where permits have delayed construction. And again, if that's information that any member of the Joint Committee or council, you know, in general would like to see in a confidential setting with OIT, we'd be happy to do that.
Okay, well, we will add that to the, Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Yeah, we'd like to get that information and I want to chime in a little with the chairman, Heenan, and Councilman O'Neal. Is there anything else that you need from the city? I'd like to get a list of what you need from the city in order to complete this contract.
I think at this point, the, the permits are the only authority that, you know, are material we, we'd need, once the verification is approved, to get the certification from OIT, but I don't think there's anything outstanding from the city.
So essentially, you could provide us with a list of what you need to the chairman and that will constitute 100% compliance?
Yeah, from our standpoint, we, from our standpoint, we're compliant now. So, we, we, we recognize that there's an ongoing review. We're not asking you to take our word for it. That's the purpose of OIT's verification process, but we'd certainly be happy to, to share with you the list of outstanding permits.
Okay, thank you.
And also, Councilman, I want to extend an invitation to every member to join our monthly meetings with OIT. Councilmen in the past have joined us, so I want to extend that invitation to join us. And whatever information that the chairman, chairman require, consistent with the confidential nature of the documents, we even more to share with the chairman and all the members.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Chairman Heenan. I guess I'm somewhat at a loss in reference to, I know the chairman has made a request of information some time ago and now the information is now going to be forthcoming. I guess I'm somewhat curious what is taking, I understand, being an attorney, I understand there's confidentiality issues and other dynamics at play, but when requests are made, why does it take to have a hearing in order to get the information?
Councilman, there, there's been no delay. We, we, we received Chairman Heenan's letter requesting certain information...
Okay.
...a little over a week ago and it was a request to discuss the information. We've provided all of that information to OIT already in the course of their verification. So that's information that's been tendered to, to the city, OIT, in connection with its verification process. Again, we, we, we're not comfortable with disclosing that in a public forum, but again, we reiterate our willingness to share that information in conjunction with OIT.
Wait, when you said your information was provided to OIT, so when a different body of government, being a legislative body, especially a council member, requested that information, why is that information not forthcoming if you already sent it to OIT?
It was, it was provided to OIT's consultant who is subject to a non-disclosure agreement, given the confidential nature of this. There's an ongoing review that is particularly sensitive at the moment. That's, that's the rationale for providing it.
And was that communicated to, in writing, to anyone?
Uh, no, we, we received Chairman Heenan's letter a week before the hearing and so we're, you know, here to discuss it now.
So, you know, and I appreciate the councilman's comments here and, and questioning, you know, the, if there were, if the information that I requested for you was confidential and you said, you would have said, hey, look, I will get the information back to you, it's confidential, don't, you know, share it with, you know, the public due for, you know, due to a lot of reasons, and we're just going to submit it to OIT. OIT still hasn't had, you know, half any information that I requested of you and you said, all right, that this information was going to be given, come back and, and provide it to me, all right? So we're having this hearing, all right, because of your lack of information, your lack of communication, all right, and your lack of communication, your lack of information, lack of, lack of data, your lack of workforce, all right, with the city... All right? So you're going to, you're going to, you're going to tell me that a room full of Verizon executives, somebody who comes in, with all due respect, you know, a, a vice president who, who's from, from the New England states, are going to come to the city of Philadelphia and say, yes, 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 leave and provide nothing? All right? Because that's what we have. We have nothing. I have no faith. I have, I have no faith and confidence, no faith and confidence that the information that we're hearing today is actual fact, is factual or truthful. So somewhere, somewhere, we're going to find out whose interpretation and what interpretation the city of Philadelphia needs to, to govern by legally. Mr. Chairman, the information... Chair recognizes Chairman O'Neal.
I'm going to go back to the MDU. There are roughly, I ballpark it, but I think roughly 25% of the individual residences in this city fall under MDU. Not buildings, residents. Because I, in my district, it's about 25, 20, 25% and it gets in higher concentrations of multifamily, it goes up. So it's a minimum probably of 25%. So if you have 600,000 units in the city, housing units, and just 25% of those are MDU units, that's about 150,000? Okay, now, there are 27,000 exceptions. 10% of them were this, which was a small number. I said, I, I thought this was going to be a bigger number and I'm sitting here thinking, how come it's only 2,700 out of 27,000? It's because, I believe, and you can verify this, and I have a follow-up, it's not just for you, it's for OIT. Is 2,700 the number of addresses of multifamily units? You can have 2,700 people in one apartment building. There are 2,700 different units or in a condominium. So how many, if, if there are 2,700 multifamilies, some of them have two families and some of them have 1,000, 1,500. What is the total number of residences in the city that are under the MDU exception? In other words, you're 2,700 times the number of units within those 2,700 buildings or addresses that you have to skip by. It sounds like, oh, well, 2,700 people, you had, I mean, 2,700, you've got units out of 600,000. That's nothing. That's very small. If it's 100,000 units, that's extremely large. That's 20% of all our, our customers and potential customers in the city. So could you answer that? Because I think we have a lot of follow-up here with this, with this issue and whether there are monopolies, whether somebody's not working hard enough to get these, whether it's a condominium association, a homeowner's, a, an apartment owner, to gain access to FIOs for their, for our residents and potentially Verizon's customers. Is it approach 100,000? Is it 150,000? I don't know. Is it 50,000? It's not 2,700, I can tell you that.
And just to be clear, the 27,000 that was referenced were tied to the permits. Those, those are households not being served just because of permits.
Oh, I think we all thought that 2,700 was the total number of exceptions.
No, that's what you said.
So what are, what is the total number of households, including every one household in an MDU, you know, population? So if 27,000 is just the permits, how many units are being subject to exception because of MDU and how many for, for the private right-of-way? So we can get a full number and an accurate count. We can leave this hearing with some information.
Yeah. We, we can, we can...
We can provide a copy of the build report that we provided to OIT. Essentially, at the end of January, we'll submit that as well with the other information that you've requested. So that'll break it down by the categories that you're asking.
But does anybody at the table know, just in the MDU, how many households are in your MDU exception?
No, again, it would be in that report, and we'll submit that to you, Mr. Chairman.
But you knew it's 2,700. How many, they're just the locations, right?
What my colleague noted, that MDU exceptions would account for about 10% of the total households in the city.
10% of the households?
Yeah.
Okay, that's different than 27. I was asking what percentage of the exceptions are -- okay.
And that's why we want to give you the report, so we're 100% accurate with you.
Of the households. So we start out with 90% of the households not being built out just because of MDU. And we count that as 100%.
10%.
And then we have the permits taking that down further, and we have the right-of-way taking that down further. So 10% of the units would be about 60,000 roughly that are not getting Verizon service, are not able to even be approached for Verizon service. So just 60,000 roughly, just on the MDU. And I thought it's 2,700, so 60,000 is a lot more than 2,700. And then, we know that the permit issue is 27,000, so now we went from roughly 60,000 to 87,000. And if the private right-of-way, do you have any idea how many exceptions are involved in that? How many customers, households?
No, we can get you that in the report.
What if it's just 13,000? We're at 100,000. 20% of our households are, have exceptions that are being promulgated here. That's 20% of our households in the city that don't come within 100% build-out, but yet we have 100% build-out. Something's not clicking here. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, first of all, we'll get to the report, but I do not believe it's 20%. I think it's less than that. But again, those are all circumstances that are contemplated in the negotiating franchise agreement and are also present in Comcast's agreement. They're all circumstances beyond Verizon's direct control. So in every instance, Verizon has built out its network and made efforts to complete installation to those properties, and has been obstructed from doing so by factors beyond its control, whether it be the refusal of a landlord to let Verizon enter into installing its facilities, the lack of a permit, or the lack of approval from private right-of-way. So the franchise always --
We're trying to learn things today about the agreement and the results of the build-out. If you are missing 60,000 households because of MDU, and it's forbidden, on the one hand, by federal law, but it's allowed by federal law if there's an exclusive marketing agreement, which is just amazing. Washington can do things that can result in that kind of craziness. We should, as the other end of this contract, know who is it that has an exclusive marketing agreement, so that lets them off the hook by federal law, and who is just shutting you out in violation of federal law. We're interested in knowing that, even if we have to be the ones to find out what it is, because they won't give you the information. And if we don't have it, we have other agencies at the federal and state level that can help us determine whether federal law is being followed or federal law is being violated. Because the numbers are staggering when you get into the thousands that are just under multifamily exceptions. Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman? Chairman O'Neill, we would love to take you up on your offer to help. We'll provide a list of the known marketing agreements that Verizon knows. We'll also provide a list of MDUs who have either passively or directly refused us entry. And if the two Chairman would be willing to help us, we'd take your help in a second. Thank you.
And just to be clear, it's in Verizon's best interest to get these exclusions reduced. If we can get into an MDU, it helps our return on investment for the $520 million we put into the city for the Fios build.
Thank you, Chairman Heenan. And I want to follow up on Chairman O'Neill's comments about multifamily. I'm familiar with contracts that have been signed in multifamily condos where cable companies have invested the money in the wiring in exchange to being the provider of that building. I've seen those deals. And so I guess the question is, is that a legal deal to do, number one? And does that exclude you guys from being in that building? Is that allowed by law?
Well, as Mr. Pinkett noted, they've taken what was a prohibition on contracts and turned them into exclusive marketing agreements, which are allowed. And the answer to whether it's a hindrance, it certainly is. It prohibits us from gaining access, because the landlord has a financial incentive to keep us out.
Right, I have seen those. But here's my other question to you. We're having this whole thing over really wanting to be 100% compliant, which I kind of think, at the end of the day, benefits your company. You'll make more money, right? You're going to get more business. This is a chance to have more customers and more business. And I can't understand why we're sitting here and why you and OIT and Streets and whatever departments we need can't figure this out and get it resolved.
And we're working actively with OIT to complete the verification process. You're 100% correct that that's in our interest.
But this was supposed to be done by February, and now it's the end of April.
No, the deployment, the franchise agreement required deployment to be completed by February 26, 2016. That was done. The verification, by necessity, had to commence after that date, and so it continues to be ongoing.
Can you give us today a reasonable date that we can have this resolved?
Yeah, again, Councilman Dome, as I've offered earlier to the Chairman, if the Chairman and the committee and the administration would like us to recommence the verification process, we'll start that on Tuesday next week, if that's a direction you'd like us to take. With respect to field testing.
Well, with respect to field testing, you know, what I think we have been asking and what we are requesting is a list of the questions and data information that you said that you have provided to OIT to us. In addition, whether it's in confidentiality, you know, or in non-disclosure, that's fine, right? But I also get a sense from OIT that they are still waiting for information themselves. So, you know, we want to help OIT receive information from you.
We've provided information to OIT, and we continue to exchange clarifications.
It's incomplete information, from what I gather. And I don't mean to be combative here, but, you know, we're hearing the same thing over and over and over again. And quite frankly, I'm insulted, right? I'm insulted that there's, I mean, lack of any kind of consideration or, you know, remembrance of the meeting that we had when I asked this information. So, I mean, I have, you know, other council members that are up here on both committees who are just appalled that there's lack of recollection of, you know, the request for information. I mean, so, you know --
Mr. Chairman, there are three of us at this panel that were in that meeting. None of us have the recollection that you seem to have, with all due respect. That said, Mr. Chairman, we're more than happy to provide the information that you've requested.
Really? Okay, well, not from my notes or my staff notes. Now, being that you said that, I'm sure you are aware of the New York Verizon Fios Implementation Final Audit Report. And that report released, the citywide Verizon build-out in July of last year. The audit showed that Verizon was claiming that the documents needed to complete an audit and verification of their build-out was proprietary and confidential. Wow, sounds familiar. All right, they intentionally delayed or did not communicate information. Well, this all seems and sounds familiar, because I'm hearing this repetitively, over and over again, and I've heard it from March 18th in my meeting. So New York City, right now, and I want to state this for the record, is currently renegotiating a remediation plan with Verizon, as they found that they hadn't complete their build-out as reported. We do not want this to happen in Philadelphia. That's why I'm making this statement right now. This isn't New York, all right? This is Philadelphia. There's 1.5 million people here, all right? It's a competitive market. It's to your advantage, and it's to the community's advantage, all right? They have access. And I'm not buying any of the lack of information, all right, or the recollection of a meeting that I was present with, where I requested non-confidential information, all right, that you're stating for the record. All right, now I want to have a couple other follow-up questions. You have 27,000 people who are denied access for Fios because of 78 permits. And we're going to get to the bottom of the permits, whether their lack of information or what the reasoning is. We're going to, I'm going to ask Streets Department to break that down. And in that question, I'd like to ask the woman, can you state your name for the record again, please?
Yes, Danielle Lasky.
Danielle, thank you. Thank you so much. So you had made a statement, all right, that work is continuing right now on the build-out of those issued permits. Is that correct?
What I'm aware of is that work continued after the February 26 deployment deadline.
Okay, great. So the work is continuing now on the build-out?
That I can't confirm, but I can confirm that work occurred during the March timeframe.
Okay, so my question, can anybody on the panel or Verizon here make an absolute statement that work is continuing as we speak on the franchise agreement, on the build-out, with the issuance of permits? You said it's being executed. Your statement on the record earlier is that these permits are being executed as we speak on the build-out. Is that a correct statement?
The franchise remains in effect. Verizon continues to comply with its franchise obligation. Work in that regard obviously continues.
So the build-out continues as we speak?
I didn't confirm that. I confirm, you asked whether or not work under the franchise agreement was continuing, and it certainly is.
Okay, so if work is continued, and I, you know, I hope that we are at 100% and the 100% execution of the remaining build-out, if work is continued, and if it is happening currently, all right, I just want to remind you something, all right, that by the law, in the franchise agreement, the law requires that no, quote, "project owner or other entity shall employ an unlicensed contractor." Has Verizon documented that the work being performed related to the franchise, or any other work, for that matter, has been conducted by contractors licensed to perform the work in the city of Philadelphia?
Mr. Chairman, we know of no unlicensed contractor working in Philadelphia.
You don't have any unlicensed contractors working in Philadelphia?
We don't know of any unlicensed contractor, and thank you for pointing it out to us, and we appreciate it.
All right, well, I'm going to request another, I'm going to make another request of information. If you could please provide to myself and to Councilman O'Neill, co-chair, a list of contractors that are working on franchise-related work. And as I'm sure Verizon is aware, Philadelphia law also, also notes that no contractor shall sell, or transfer, or otherwise allow another person of business entity to use a permit issued to the contractor to perform construction work. So could you please provide to the chair a list of permits and information related to who applied for permits for any and all work having conducted since the beginning And I also want to note in the franchise agreement that Section 4.1.9 of the franchise agreement states that "all facilities and equipment for the system shall be designed, built, and operated in a manner that protects the safety of our system workers and the public." Further, Section 4.1.10 of the franchise agreement states that Verizon shall maintain trucks, tools, testing equipment, monitoring devices, and other equipment and facilities, as well as trained and skilled personnel sufficient to ensure compliance with applicable law and requirements set forth in this section. Can Verizon speak with certainty to the level of training and certification that the staff currently contracted or employed to deploy, maintain franchise system?
Verizon can say that they are in compliance with the franchise agreement, including the provision you cited.
So if management has called in to work on the franchise agreement and the build-out, are they licensed contractors? Are they licensed contractors? Are they working on our 911 system as we speak for the sake of public safety?
Mr. Councilman, we've agreed to --
Are they working in our hospitals and our life safety systems and our first responders? Are they trained and licensed to perform the work on our franchise agreement?
Mr. Chairman, we've agreed to give you the list. We're happy to provide it.
So the questioning on citizens, residents, who would enjoy having Fios and having it ready and available, can you define what the access availability means, pass-by, and how that's calculated? How is that? So if, you know, in the right-of-way, you're going down the street, your fiber is passing a street or a block, that's considered a pass-by? Is that correct?
The concept of pass-by is not included in the Verizon franchise agreement with the city of Philadelphia.
I'm not asking about the franchise agreement.
It's a service availability obligation that we have.
Is that a service availability?
Yes, correct.
If it goes down the street, is that ready and accessible? How does that transpose to a last-mile connectivity to an actual resident, instead of passing by their house in the street?
My colleague Danielle Lasky will explain the technical aspects of how we make service available, which is the standard under the franchise agreement.
Right, and for single-family units, we do build-out, and we place fiber cable, we place terminals, and we allocate those addresses within each one of those terminals, and that runs through our systems, and that makes those addresses video-capable. For MDUs that allow us access to the building, we do the same thing. We bring our fiber facilities into the building once a premise access license is received and signed by a property owner, and once they agree to the design approval, once they provide us design approval for our engineering design. We then add those addresses into a terminal, which then makes those addresses service-available for the residents. When it comes to properties that do not have, have not given us access to their locations, we allocate fibers in a coil outside of the property, whether on a pole or in the closest manhole, specific to that property location. Should a customer -- Should a customer place a formal inquiry with Verizon, we follow up on that inquiry, we make attempts to negotiate with the property owner. I think, as mentioned previously, we send three letters, we make multiple call attempts, we document all of that, and if we do receive a successful PAL, we have the ability to access the building, we have the ability to engineer that building, and if given the design approval, we will then place our fiber facilities and make that building service-available.
Okay, well, thank you for that. So, so if, you know, whatever percent, if it's 85%, 100%, so now we're supposed to be at 100%, and that means 100% of Philadelphia, with, you know, minus the exceptions, has access for connectivity. So, if I am, if this panel up here, right, this, this panel here is, is a row of homes, right, and each plate is, is an address, and you have your fiber going down the street, and who knows where it goes, you said closest manhole or whatever, does that mean, just because it goes down the street, that I have access? Or does that, or does access mean it has to be on the aerial for, ready to be connected for the last mile to my house? So, do I count into the 100% build, just because it goes by the street? Is my question?
You're saying that you're in a row-home environment, where we would have provisioned our fiber-optic cable down the street, those addresses would have also correlated to fiber-optic terminals, and we would have added those addresses into the terminal, and you would be able to order service as a result?
So, a term, terminal could be in, in the manhole three blocks away, correct?
No, our terminals are strategically located for ease of installation.
Well, I, so, I, I question that somewhat, but that's not for me. So, may I ask a question that you could provide an answer to the Chair? Hopefully, we'll get it in this calendar year. What does that mean with the, what, what does that actually mean, alright, on connectivity?
Mr. Chairman, I would encourage you, when you re-question CBG, the, the company doing the testing, they specifically tested in the field for occurrences that you're asking about, and they verified--
Current subscribers?
No. In many instances, they tested for exactly the example you asked for, which is, you are in a row house, you haven't yet requested service. They field-verified that Verizon had facilities in a position to provide service in a standard installation to you upon request.
So, in facilities like your central offices?
No, out, out on the street, as Danielle alluded to. And again, it, when you, when you re-speak with Tom and the folks, his engineers that went out there, I would encourage you to, to ask them, and they can provide their information to you, what they found.
And, and under that process, that very testing that, that Paul just referenced, that's, that, that served as the basis for CBG's determination that Verizon had built out to 85% as of the year six benchmark.
Right, and, but the field testing is still incomplete, correct?
For year six, no, that's complete. And it verified that we made 85%. For the 100%, it's still ongoing.
And, and again, Mr. Chairman, I offer again, if you'd like us to pick up the testing on Monday, the field verification, we offer that to you and the administration.
Now, I look, I, I, I would, I would like my, I would like my questions answered from, you know, that I asked for back in March 18th. Does any other members have any questions for Verizon? Listen, thank, thank you for your, your testimony. The Chair will call up Jim Gardler, CWA group. Excuse me, Verizon, if, you may want to hang around, just in case? You can state your name for the record and proceed with your summarized testimony, please? And I know, noted for the record that the full testimony has been documented and made part of the record here today. Thank you.
James Gardler. Good morning. My name is James Gardler, and I'm the President of Communication Workers of America, Local 13,000. I want to thank you for holding these hearings and for the opportunity to testify. I would like to state that the previous testimony ended with a statement in terms of, and everybody ended, and it ended happily ever after for everybody, but obviously, we realize that's not the case. Most people in this room realize that. CWA Local 13,000 represents the technicians and repair center employees working for Verizon in Pennsylvania, and our sister local 13,500 represents the call center workers. Together, CWA represents close to 4,500 members working for Verizon in Pennsylvania, and over 1,000 in the Philadelphia metro region. Our members build, maintain, install, and service Verizon's wireline networks, including the copper-based telephone network and FiOS. They also provide customer service for both residential and business customers. Verizon has broken its promise to the city to build out its all-fiber FiOS network to all residential dwelling units, and to make it available to businesses by February of 2016. Verizon's broken promise is not just a technical violation or a near miss, it appears to be, appears to reflect flagrant disregard for its obligations the company willingly entered into in 2009. It's worth noting that CWA supported this franchise agreement in 2009, hoping that it would lead to continued employment and the provisions of the state-of-the-art broadband service that the people of this city want. In fact, our technicians in the field tell us clearly that Verizon has failed to build out service to many parts of the city, leaving many of the city residents without access to FiOS. CWA estimates that tens of thousands of people, and based on some of the testimony that I've heard earlier, possibly hundreds of thousands of people in the city cannot access FiOS, despite the franchise requirement that it be made available to every customer by now. Throughout the city, there are blocks or large parts of neighborhoods without service. This includes households in Phase 1 areas, such as Germantown and South Philadelphia, that were supposed to have had universal access to FiOS by 2012, as well as Phase 2 areas, including many areas of Center City, North and Northeast Philadelphia, South and West Philadelphia. Throughout the city, especially in Center City, there are countless multi-dwelling units that have, they have passed since the build has started in 2009, and those people still do not have access to FiOS. Here's what our members tell us is going on. In 2009, when the Philadelphia franchise agreement began, Verizon started building a network in the city. Instead of hiring more workers in the city, the company transferred in technicians from outside the city to cover the work. While the work from those outlying areas continued to back up, and that meant that more and more people in the city, they were working on the Philly build, but the services out in those outlying areas continued to back up, and technicians were working more and more hours out in those areas. It robbed other areas of the badly-needed workers to help continue that build in those particular areas. Since 2009, Verizon has reduced the technician workforce in Philadelphia and surrounding counties by over 1,000 employees. To state it simply, there's just not enough technicians here to do the work. Even though Verizon failed to hire enough workers in the first few years, the FiOS build appeared to be a genuine effort due to the hard work of our members. However, in 2012, Lowell McAdam became the CEO of Verizon. McAdam's experience, unlike the previous CEO, is primarily in wireless, not the company's wireline network. That year, the company slowed down the deployment into new areas and buildings. Recently, the company began transferring workers back to the suburbs, rather than keep them in Philadelphia to work on the Philadelphia FiOS build. So, rather than hire more workers, Verizon has tried to do this build by imposing maximum amounts of overtime on our members. Quite simply, again, there are not enough technicians to complete the build and meet the franchise build-out timeline. Another reason Verizon has failed to meet its FiOS deployment obligation is that the company's delays applying for right-of-way and other permits needed to dig up streets to lay conduit and pull fiber through existing conduit. CWA has offered to facilitate this process, but we've been turned down. Verizon may try to blame the city, but the fault lies squarely with the company. Many permits associated with this build-out have still yet to be filed, and countless numbers still sit in limbo waiting for the company to take action to get these services to the customers. I anticipate that Verizon may also try to defend its failure to deploy FiOS everywhere by arguing that it cannot get access to multi-dwelling units where the property owner has negotiated competitive marketing agreements with another provider. While I can tell you that there are many MDUs where the property owners and residents are eager to get FiOS, but Verizon has not built to them. Some of these buildings do not have competitive marketing agreements. In others, Verizon has not even tried to negotiate for building access when the contracts are due to expire. It's my understanding that state law gives Verizon the right to insist on building access if the tenant requests FiOS service. How many times has Verizon invoked this right? And if so, is it only to serve high-income, multi-dwelling units? We should take a look at this data. Verizon's failure in Philadelphia is part of a broader pattern. A June 2015 New York City audit found that Verizon failed to meet its franchise obligations to pass all residential households by 2014 in that city. The New York City audit found that Verizon did not pass almost one-quarter of the buildings in New York, and although Verizon hauled out the same tired excuse that it couldn't get MDU access, the New York City auditors found in many cases, the landlord wanted Verizon in, but Verizon stalled in providing service. Verizon has failed to build FiOS in most parts of the Commonwealth, and is not seeking any new franchise agreements. In those non-FiOS communities, Verizon is letting its copper network deteriorate before our very eyes, leaving customers with poor, or in some cases, no service. The Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission has opened a formal case to investigate a CWA complaint about Verizon's neglect of its traditional landline infrastructure in its non-FiOS areas serving millions of Pennsylvania customers. That investigation has been escalated to the hearing by the PUC, and a pre-conference hearing is scheduled on May 26th. Verizon's arrogance and greed know no limits. This is a company that made $39 billion in profits in the last three years, and $1.5 billion in profits every month in 2015. This is a company that paid its top five executives $233 million over the last five years, and spent $38 billion in stock buybacks and dividends over the last five years. Verizon CEO Lowell McAdam makes over 200 times the pay of an average Verizon worker. Certainly Verizon can afford to meet its franchise obligation to build FiOS throughout the city of Philadelphia. Rather than invest in our city, Verizon uses it to pay massive profits and pay exorbitant salaries to its top executives and transfer wealth to their shareholders. Verizon, Verizon needs to finish the job in Philadelphia, to expand its all-fiber network throughout the city, and maintain its copper infrastructure until it upgrades the network to fiber. To fulfill its obligation, it is absolutely critical that Verizon hire more workers locally, including technicians and other staff. Currently, Verizon is moving in the opposite direction. Instead of hiring more workers, Verizon is trying to eliminate job security for its wireline workers, close call centers in Pennsylvania, and offshore work to the Philippines, India, Mexico, and they want to cut their headcount. One thing is certain, the last time I checked, Verizon doesn't have any customers in India covered by this franchise agreement. No one there supports the network that our members build, and there is no magic sand from India that keeps this network functioning right here in Philadelphia. That's done by the members of the CWA and the IBW right here in the city of Philadelphia. The members of both of our unions proudly provide these services all throughout the great city, and this city and the people who live here deserve the opportunity at these jobs, not someone who contributes zero to purchasing, installing, and maintaining the network. We thank you for holding these hearings today, and for your efforts to hold Verizon accountable to deliver FiOS throughout the city, universal access to vital and creating a protected, and creating protected, good jobs, and ensuring cable competition and access to high-speed internet. This is what 39,000 CWA and IBW members are fighting for at Verizon right now. We urge you to redouble your efforts alongside the administration to hold the Verizon, hold Verizon accountable. We need a comprehensive audit of Verizon's FiOS deployment in Philadelphia, and we need to hold their feet to the fire to complete the FiOS build in the city. As a lifelong resident of the city of Philadelphia, I have one more statement to make today on behalf of our members, the business community, and the residents of the city of Philadelphia. Verizon, don't screw Philadelphia out of FiOS.
Thank you, thank you for your, your testimony here today, and thank you all. I want to thank all your members that are here who have joined us for this hearing, so thank you so much, and-- Thank, thank you for, for what you do on a, on a day-to-day basis, trying to raise your family and stay here in the city of Philadelphia. I am a Verizon subscriber, just want to let you know that. Practice what we preach. So, with the, so again, thank you for your testimony. With all the testimony that you've heard here today, and the line of questioning from, from this, this panel, and, and council members, is there anything that you would like to add, or is there any questions that we can ask on your behalf that you can state for the record publicly?
Well, I think the, the line of questioning you had as a result of the recent work stoppage in terms of the quality and the safety of the current people that Verizon is bringing into the city, should definitely be held in question right now, because I'm fearful for just about any person that lives in this city, who Verizon sends their home to actually perform any service, not only associated with the FiOS build, but also associated with any copper network that Verizon has out there. I wouldn't feel confident with anything that they're sending out there right now based on the skills, training, and the safety associated with that. So, I appreciate, you know, your efforts to request that information from Verizon at this hearing today. In terms of the other discussion you had related to build-out, and we've heard this term mentioned many times in the past, and I don't know what answers Verizon was trying to dance around with their responses to your question, but our understanding, what Verizon looks at is when they place a fiber cable, they consider it called a home pass. And the way Verizon looks at this, and I'll put it in pretty simple terms, if you were to put a fiber cable from City Hall and run it down to the Navy Yard, or run it in the other direction towards Temple, you know, that's a fiber cable passing a home. And the object of this build-out, in our understanding, and I think what Verizon committed to do, was to stop at those homes and give people the access, not just go past them and keep right on going. They need to have the ability to call and say, "I want this service." Personal experience, just from our union location, is we tried to get this service for years through this build-out, years and years, and the only way we were capable of actually understanding why we weren't capable of getting it, is because of some of our contacts within Verizon, who explained it was the permit issue. And the more and more we investigated into that issue, and I appreciate your line of questioning related to the permits, because I think that is one of the issues that Verizon will, again, try to skate around, is that they make mistakes with the permit filing, and I think you guys asked those questions during their time up here.
Who, who made mistakes on the permit filing?
Verizon, Verizon. And we found this out from having conversation with different people who put these permits in, people that deal with that on the Verizon end, that they did make mistakes, and that's--
And we're, we're going to be asking the Streets Department and Highway--
Right.
--Division, so, they'll, they'll have that information as well, that--
But our understanding is there are countless number of permits that Verizon has still yet to file. So while they say there's only, I think they mentioned something about 70 permits, I think--
78.
78 that haven't been satisfied, there are countless numbers that they still have not even applied for, and all those residents, and keep in mind, we talked a lot about residents, there's FiOS business service out there too, and there are tons of businesses in this city that do not have access to the service, that are missing out on that--
I don't think this building we're in has access to that service.
Add it to the list.
But that, but that's besides the point. Chair recognizes Councilman Squill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On, on that line of questioning, when we talk about the permitting issue, and part of this resolution was actually that the city would even help Verizon, and, and our council districts would work with the Streets Department to try to expedite these permits, understanding, from what the number I heard earlier, 27,000 households were associated with permit issues--
With the 78.
But 78 permits.
Yeah, 20... Point clarity, from what I wrote down from Verizon, it said that 27,000 residents were not, do not have access due to 78 permits. So that number is tied to those specific permits.
And I think that's good to know too, because we want to help, and I mean, listen, anybody who wants to help, I mean, we could eventually call Verizon back up again, but you don't turn down help from the workforce or from City Council, and I understand now that from what I, the statement they made today was that Streets Department has been very good issuing permits to them recently. The build-out that has happened is somewhere between 85%, I guess, and that was the city that was verified last year. And the number of 85% was also including exceptions. So what we'd like to get at eventually would be, what is the real number if it's 85% and how many total exceptions? We know 27 for permit, 27,000 household for permits. Access-related, I don't know, did we get a number for access-related households?
We don't have any numbers.
All right. And then the multi-dwelling units. And we're going to also do some research, I know with Councilman O'Neil, about the contracts associated with the multi-dwelling, multi-dwelling units, to see the legality of it. I know the marketing agreement, that's a little confusing to me to see how they can have a marketing agreement and not a franchise agreement with certain... I think everybody should have the access, and I think that may be a federal issue. We could work with our federal officials and our senators and congressmen to find out why that would even be allowed, and we want everybody to have access. When you stated about the, I guess, pass-through, is the pass-through number counted as all those households have an availability to Verizon?
Based on my experience with meetings we've held with Verizon in the past, is Verizon looks at homes passed as their number to justify, you know, benchmarks that they need to meet. And, you know, in terms of the franchise agreement, I can't speak for what they're telling you guys, but from our understanding, if they're saying that Philadelphia is 100% build-out except for these exceptions that are still sitting on the table, I would have a very, very difficult time believing that statement.
Well, I think that's where, that's where OIT comes in, and I think knowing, if we're knowing if that's considered a pass-through is considered available, or is that considered a pass-by?
Considered a build-out.
Is it considered a build-out or not? I mean, that's something... Can I just ask somebody from the city if they could just answer that question from our perspective?
It's Harry Kells.
Yeah. No, regarding single-family units, it has to have a terminal. If there's no terminal that allows service to be provided to the single-family unit within seven days, that's the requirement in the franchise, which means literally that that would just be running the fiber drop to the ONT and the ONT placed, then it is not built. It's not just a pass-by. The issue is MDUs, and as you've heard, there's been a lot of discussion there, because if you can't gain access to the property, then you can't even bring the fiber onto the property. So it has to stay in the right-of-way somewhere. So it's either coiled up in a manhole or it's coiled up on a pole so that at some point, if they gain access, they can bring it into the building. Our engineer, when he looks at that, has been looking at where the closest fiber is in order to be able to serve that, and it has to be within a certain distance where that would not be considered served as well. And that's some of the information that we're waiting for. He noted over 20 instances where we couldn't verify that the fiber was there. We were told that it was there in the manhole or wherever. That's some of the information we're waiting for, and we did request on the next deployment to make sure that we had people on the crew that could open up the manhole, vent it properly, you know, go through all the safety requirements, and then allow us to see the fiber.
So a pass-by then is not counted as available to the household?
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct. There has to be a terminal placed. If there's no terminal placed and we can't test light, then it has to meet some other exception. And if it doesn't meet an exception, it's not built.
But the example that we heard, excuse me. The example that we heard, we heard it right here. If fiber's running down the street, people have, could have access to that fiber, FiOS, but they don't have access because when they call, they get told, and that's, I think, what you're referring to. Do you verify that, that that block, which looks like it has service, actually has service?
Yes. In other words, if we were to go to a block and it just had fiber running down the street, there were no terminals, and remember, we're taking all the households in the city and developing this random sample, and so that house isn't known, you know, to Verizon until we pick it and we go there. If there's no terminal, if it can't be served within the distance that it would need to be served to provide a proper signal level, then it would fail.
What if there is a terminal, but there's, people are not having access to the terminals? I don't understand.
Well, we test the terminal. In other words, they activate a connection from the hub to the terminal, and the light has to meet a certain optical signal level in order to be able to provide service.
Right. But what if that's done, and yet people are being told on that block? I mean, this is a hypothetical, but I think it's one that we should get verification of because we're verifying, that's what your job is. How are we verifying that a block actually has access to a live terminal that comes from the...
Is there a terminal at every block?
From the hub.
I see what you're saying, yeah. Obviously, we're doing a random sample, so we're not going to hit every block in the city. We would certainly appreciate, you know, any information.
Well, I'll give you some information. If you have a block that appears to have a hub connection, a terminal in place, before you say, "Okay, that block is 100% build-out," check and see if there are any customers on that block. Something as simple as that would verify that service is actually available to the people on the block.
Right.
And that, to me, is an extra step that would confirm what we're just discussing up here. Chairman Heenan and Councilman Squillen.
If I could, just to give you an example of one situation, this, again, goes back to our local Union Hall, and the way we became aware that FiOS, what we thought would be available on that particular block is the 2100 block of Race Street. So a customer in some new construction across the street from our Union Hall had FiOS. One of our members were out there, they installed the service, provided it to the customer. We called up the next day and we tried to order it, and they said it's not available. So at that point, wheels started spinning, well, why is it available across the street but not on our side of the street? And I think that's the example you're looking for, and there's a perfect situation or scenario where it was dealing with permits to get that service on the other side, and there's Verizon counting those homes, every resident or business that is on that block in their build-out when they provide that data to you, when in actuality, that service doesn't really exist for those people.
And, yeah, and another thing, I guess, when we consider OIT has to get these numbers, right? So they're going to tell you, is there a specific number for passed that you're getting?
Yeah, ultimately, we'll have a total number of households that are available for service in the entire city, and then out of that, there'll be a number of exceptions that will bring that number down for those that actually could get service within seven days.
All right. So we'll know how many businesses and homes were passed and how many are available for sale.
You know, this is residents, the franchise, and I'll let OIT speak to this, but the franchise treats businesses differently than residential households. They pass residents, or I'm sorry, businesses, they do provide service to them, but they don't fall within that same service obligation that residents do.
But at the end of the day, beside the exceptions, everybody needs to be available for sale, right?
Right.
So if they're passed, they may not be available for sale.
Well, are you talking about residents now?
Residents.
Residents, yeah.
Or businesses. I mean, they...
Yeah.
Customers.
They may have what's considered service availability, but if there's an exception, then they would not be available for sale. That is correct.
It's hard to comprehend. I'm just going to say, it's just hard to comprehend because we're the ones that are going to decide if it was done completely or not, right? The city. So we decide if it's going to be done, but if we could say it was passed, but there's still some exceptions out there, so, I mean, is there a number of exceptions that we could say that's reasonable number of exceptions? If it's passed, residential should not have the exceptions, right? As you go down a street, everybody should have that access.
Right. Once permitting issues are resolved...
And we'll help them with that also.
Right. Then, yes, single-family units universally should have access. Now, you do have, and I think they mentioned, some private right-of-way issues.
Right.
That's the residents themselves deciding that they don't want access because they control the property, it's kind of the property.
And that could be documented and you would...
Right, that's correct, and that's what OIT and we are doing. We're documenting. Every time, we've run into these instances already in the first half of our certification effort, and we're documenting that. Again, Steve Robertson sent a five-page letter to Verizon requesting information on specific addresses that were part of the random sample, and we will get that and we will determine whether that's an actual exception or not. On the, on the multi-dwelling unit, it's going to take a fair amount of work to determine the status of those exceptions. As I think Verizon indicated in its testimony, 10% of the households in the city, the total number of households, and I think you mentioned that that was around 60,000, they indicate that they have denial of access. So that's a large number of properties and a large number of units. So literally, in order to verify that, we're going to have to get the three letters that were sent, we're going to have to find out what it is, and then I think, as you indicated, then there may be a way of assisting Verizon in providing service to this.
And I think it's our job to assist them, and I mean, we want to make this as easy as possible. We want everybody to have access. When they go through and actually do the service, and I think now I get a better understanding with the pass-by is, that's still our city's responsibility to decide if that pass-by was considered, they went past this area, but yet not everybody is still available for sale. Why? Is that included in the exception? Is it not included in the exception? And then you could be able to come out with a number that says, "Is this completed?"
That is correct.
So it's going to take some time, once you get these numbers from Verizon, to do that.
Especially on the MDUs, yes. Yeah. On the single-family units, that's the smaller portion of what's affected, and as you indicated, the permitting issues between Streets and OIT and Verizon, those can be determined what the issues are and those can be resolved. Private right-of-way issues can be delineated, and so they'll move more quickly, I think, in determining, you know, service, saleable service versus service available but an exception. The MDUs will take some time, yes.
All right, because we, I mean, as part of the resolution was to help. So we want to help, you guys want to help, Streets Department wants to help, and the workers want to help. So we want to get it done and hopefully get this off our plate in the meantime. But the last question, at some point, we're going to make a decision if it was fit out or not.
That's correct.
Right? So we don't have a date yet, right? So we know that. This started, the process of finalizing that started when?
Of actually reviewing the data.
Yes.
We started reviewing the data, actually, the day before the build was finished. We met with Verizon and started reviewing what they had up to that point.
February 25th.
February 25th. And then the first set of testing was actually the week of March the 14th, so literally two weeks after. As Councilman Heenan said, I believe it would have been completed by now, but the field testing, as I think all these gentlemen have indicated, in order to do it properly...
But does the work stoppage change what the numbers are?
Well, no. You mean as far as the total numbers that were reported by Verizon and those kinds of things? No, the flow of information should continue. That is correct. It's the field verification and us being able to, yeah, that stops until we have the...
Right. All right. So we should still be receiving those numbers, and at some point, we'll have an actual number of issues caused by permits, issues for access, right? Issues because of the multi-dwelling units.
Right.
So is there any other exceptions that would add a large number of people not having availability?
I don't believe there are, no.
Okay.
It's those three major categories that make up the bulk of them.
And, all right, thank you.
Okay.
Chair recognizes Chairman O'Neil.
Thank you, Councilman. The, one thing I want to leave with today and leave the hearing with on the record is that if we were here and the entire verification was done because there was no strike and timetables were met and we were hearing a final, this is what our final was, 100% build-out with 15% exceptions or whatever that might be, I don't think we'd be real satisfied with the end result at this point. So I think the analysis that we have to do and OIT has to do, and maybe with this administration, we can do it in conjunction, as opposed to being separate, is some of this random sampling, I mean, a random sampling, and I, it doesn't have to be the Union Hall, it could be any business on that block or in any other location that has somebody across the street with FiOS and they can't get it. A random sampling doesn't do that. I know it's a lot cheaper to do it that way, but there has to be something that's more in-depth. I'm not saying it has to be door-to-door, but we need more information. For instance, if there are 60,000, and it's probably somewhere in the ballpark of that on the multifamily, we have to know what location didn't let you have access because that's wrong, and we can, we can deal with that. As a government, we can deal with that. Secondly, did you verify a loophole that they have, as we've heard described today, where the federal government, well, no longer allows that, that build-out monopoly that Councilman Dom referred to as an apartment owner, because they used to do that all the time? But what if that is the only thing they're not allowing you in for is because of something that violates federal law? Let us know that. It could be 1,000 units, it could be five units, it doesn't matter. We need more information than that's a MDU or whatever they're calling it. Then we can quantify how many households are being deprived of FiOS as a competitor and as a service because of what seems to be a real mistake on part of the federal government, if they're allowing something in the back door through an exclusive marketing agreement with a landlord or a building that they don't allow directly with Comcast, Verizon, or whatever, that exclusive agreement. We need more information on that. I think we need more information on this idea of if a block has fiber in it, has terminals, how do we know, again, if there's 50 houses on the block, you don't have to check all 50, but that's where you get into the level of random. We're going to do random checking on that block, but not random city-wide where we take a sample, a sample, a sample, because there's too many units involved that could be passed over. And this isn't, this is our, it's your job as a contractor, but it's really our responsibility to do this at the highest level of accuracy possible and within reason of expense. And I'm not sure we're there, or maybe not even close. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Councilman, let me just state that the request I believe you put out there to Verizon asking for that map or the maps of the city that would identify streets, and I would expect addresses too, would probably be the best way to identify this, and I'd like to offer the services of the CWA and, you know, working with you and Verizon to verify that that information is correct, because the men and women you see here today are the ones that are... are out there doing that work every single day, installing the terminals, installing the cables, and providing the service to the customers and businesses. So, we'd be more than happy to help you verify that information when that time comes, providing that information. I can tell you from firsthand experience, and I somewhat sympathize for OIT, for the fight they're having getting information from Verizon. I know how difficult they could be at times, but I appreciate all the work you guys are doing to push them to get that information to make sure that they live up to what they committed to in the city.
Thank you.
And I think it's, and we're near end of this hearing, but I think it's in everybody's best interest to have everything verified, to move the agreement and, you know, conclude the verification process for 100% fit-out, right, build-out of the city of Philadelphia and the access. I mean, just by the numbers, you know, from the questioning of, you know, smart council members that are here, I mean, they're great, you know, great questions. Between the three exceptions, you have, you could have over 100,000 residents and/or businesses that are, that do not have access to Fios. And that's a little alarming. So, I mean, there's a lot of skepticism, you know, that I can hear in the members questioning, you know, looking for the information that's been requested. As I requested the maps for the exception, you know, on the 18th of March, and here we are, and apparently that meeting never happened. But, you know, but I really do, you know, hope that, you know, everybody can really work together, provide the information necessary so we can provide the residents, right, the homeowners and residents of the city of Philadelphia, and the people who choose to invest in the businesses here in the city of Philadelphia, you know, a competitive service, a good product delivered by great employees, you know, that you represent. So, I want to thank you for all those who have testified here today and spoke here today. Council will do everything in its power to make sure that the laws on our books will be enforced, and make no mistake, Verizon franchise deal was not just an agreement between Verizon and the city, but a law that will require continuing and continuous enforcement. The citizens of Philadelphia deserve a competitive market at every address throughout the city of Philadelphia. And we asked many important questions here today, some, you know, will be waiting for a response, and I imagine that there's going to be more to come in the future. So, as I stated in my opening remarks, I fully expect outstanding data requests or unresolved questions to be handled in the immediate and proper attention that this committee requires. You know, before I close for the record, the Philadelphia Federation of Teachers has submitted a letter with regard to this issue, which will be attended and extended to the record and made part of the record here today. And with that, we will, unless you have any final remarks?
I just want to thank Councilman Squilla, Councilman, or Chairman O'Neill, and Chairman Heenan for giving me the opportunity to present this testimony today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time. We will, thank you for your time and your testimony and answering your questions. We will now go to our public comment portion of the, of this public hearing. So, Clerk, would you read the first panel of public comments, please?
Brian Mercer, Helix Chase, Daniel Bowder, and Ed Mooney. Can you approach the witness table, please?
Yep. And before we start with our public comment, for the sake of redundancy in time, could you please limit your remarks to three minutes, please? Thank you for your courtesy and consideration. If you can state your name, state your name for the record and proceed with your public comment. Thank you.
Hi. Good morning, Council. My name is Brian Mercer. I'm a Philadelphia resident in the West Philadelphia neighborhood and executive director of the Media Mobilizing Project. At Media Mobilizing Project, we believe that every Philadelphian has a right to Internet access, and with options for broadband on the decline, we think it's even more important that we get this right. And so, we're really thankful that Council is hosting this hearing today and that you're asking the tough questions of Verizon on this issue. We've worked hard with this body in the past to make sure that community voices are, were heard on the Comcast franchise agreement, and we're going to do the same on these Verizon issues. And we're deeply concerned with what we're seeing Verizon's practices be in communities. Over the last two months, we've been asking people to share their issues with Verizon service, and we've identified alone...
Excuse me, for... You keep it quiet. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. We've identified 226 locations over those last two months where people have attempted to sign up for service and were not able to. Those cases, they stretch every neighborhood of the city, and our city has some of the worst rates of Internet adoption and poverty, and so Verizon really is not helping. What Verizon offers as an alternative to Fios is a more expensive, lower-quality service. They offer a service at $20 a month for one megabit per second, and for all the issues we saw with Comcast, they're offering something 10 times faster for less. So, what we think, we think it's really urgent that Council hold Verizon accountable, that these hearings continue, that Verizon has to keep coming back until they reach 100% build-out, and that the, we think what Verizon is doing is an attack on the fine men and women of the CWA who have been on strike because Verizon is trying to get out of offering this Fios service. We think that Verizon should commit to connect every home in Philadelphia and that it should do it with union labor and protect consumers and workers alike.
Mr. Mercer, in your testimony, you stated that you conducted a survey, you know, over 300 subscribers who were looking to subscribe to Fios and Verizon. If you could provide that to the chair here, and, you know, we'll coordinate with the city just for verification. I appreciate that.
That's right. We definitely can do that.
Next witness, if you state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Hello? Okay. My name is Helix Chase Skares Horwitz, and I live in West Philadelphia. When I first moved into my current apartment almost three years ago, we had Verizon's quote-unquote "high-speed Internet service," served over a DSL line and tops out at about seven megabits a second. At the time, I was working primarily as a freelance video editor and needed my in-home Internet connection to both receive materials and deliver completed projects to clients. At the speeds I was getting through Verizon, I once waited three days for a three-to-four gigabyte file to upload to Dropbox. Most of the time, in order to deliver projects to clients, I had to leave my house and go to places with actual high-speed connections in order to upload. I've always been wary of Comcast's corporate practices and attempted to avoid becoming a customer whenever possible, when after a few months it became clear that the Internet speeds Verizon were serving up were untenable to my work situation. I searched for high-speed options that would not land us in a devil's contract with Comcast, and unfortunately, there were no other options available. We signed up for an account with Comcast within a year of moving into our apartment. I'd prefer to return to Verizon as a customer, but three years later and after submitting numerous requests through the online system, my current address still does not receive Fios services, despite many houses within blocks of mine being able to obtain Fios. For young people working in communications and technology like myself, having an at-home high-speed Internet connection is critical for our ability to work and live in the city of Philadelphia, and it's essential that Verizon follow through on its promise to make high-speed Internet available to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. My name is Daniel Bowder, and I serve as campaign manager for the Philadelphia Council AFL-CIO, and our council represents over 100 different unions, representing over 150,000 working men and women here in Philadelphia, including our sisters and brothers in the CWA. Our Labor Council depends on fast Internet connections to do the work that we do representing our unions and our members. More and more, our communications have moved online, email blasts, video, social media, et cetera. The way that we communicate has moved into the digital age. When I learned that Verizon was building an all-fiber network throughout the city of Philadelphia, we were excited at the council and wanted to be signed up for it. We have called Verizon repeatedly. We've used Verizon's website many times to try and obtain the Fios service, and the message that we keep getting back from Verizon that it is not available at our address. Now, it is my understanding that Verizon signed a franchise agreement with the city of Philadelphia. We heard plenty about that today during the various testimony. It was over seven years ago, and the agreement was supposed to be completed by February of this year. Now, to the committee and to the chairman, I say, February has come and gone, and to Verizon, I say, where's my Fios? Because we don't have it on 22nd Street. So, I'm looking to city council to hold Verizon's feet to the fire, to make good on their promises to this city.
Thank you for your testimony. Could you call up the next panel?
Richard Minner, Avriel Spiller, Deborah Codish, and June Cowan.
You want to just let me finish before they get up here? I'll be quick. Promise.
No, we'll get her, we'll get them up, and just ask you to adhere to the three-minute time rule.
Why don't we let them go first and I go last?
If you can. Okay.
Hello, and thank you. It's a pleasure to be here before you. My name is Richard Minner. I'm the Assistant Business Manager for the Philadelphia Joint Board of Workers United here in Philadelphia. We represent over 3,000 members. This issue is centric to our work as trade unionists. You know, we deal with our membership database, our health and welfare benefit funds, and then our multimedia access back and forth between our members, including the proactive ability to service our members, often through the use of high-speed Internet. I was appalled when, after finding out about Fios supposedly being available across this city, I was appalled to, when our office called and found out that in fact, our building wasn't covered, that we had no access. Our address is 22 South 22nd Street, and we're asking immediately that the city take action, whatever's necessary to remedy this situation, and hold Verizon accountable and take care of the men and women that service those accounts, the CWA members. We stand with you, and thank you for your time.
It's an honor to be here before you, Councilman, Chairman, and beautiful workers, CWA in Philadelphia. As Verizon scurries away, it is nice to know they are just as accessible as their Fios network. Yeah, sorry. My name is Gabriel Wolf Cohen Spiller. I am a resident and born and raised in Philadelphia. I'm here on behalf of Media Mobilizing and the rest of Philadelphia. And, you know, with one of the deepest levels of poverty in the country, one of the poorest big cities, Philadelphia has one of the largest digital divides, where almost one of every three citizens, primarily the poor, are offline. As of Thursday, the 25th of this past December, sorry, this past February, the Federal Communications Commission ruled that broadband access is a utility. Like water, like electricity, it is a necessity and a right we as citizens here in Philadelphia have. I'm not really here, though, to ask you to provide Internet access. That's something that a contract you already signed demands. I'm actually here to ask that you provide affordable, low-cost Internet, something even the monotonous entity, your corporate comrade Comcast, offers with their Internet Essentials program. And with thousands of skilled workers on strike and a noble act of unity behind me, you undoubtedly have the workforce to deliver broadband access to our entire city. And Verizon, with the billions of profits you attain monthly, I know you can also afford to offer affordable, low-cost Internet options. So, Verizon, wherever you are, I know you have a contract, but I want to know, do you have a conscience? Thank you.
My name's Deborah Codish. I'm here as a community member, and really to speak to what it feels like to be on the other, the other side of the issues that the communications workers are raising about what's hap, what the terrible service that Verizon provides because of continuing to cut the workforce. We have, I live in West Philadelphia for 35 years. We have a noisy landline, really slow Internet. We're part of the 15% that doesn't have Fios. The signal interrupt is interrupted and dies in our house. I don't know if that's because Comcast came through in the back and now their signal comes up fine on our Wi-Fi, but we're not on Comcast. But, there's, the biggest problem for us is that there's, there's a total disincentive to try to get any of this fixed. It's terrible, terrible customer service. People call it Verizon hell, when you have to call up and wait and wait and wait, but it's a torturous experience if you try to call for help. It used to be that somebody who actually knew about Macintosh, computers would be on the line if you had Internet problems, but now it's someone following a set of prompts, which don't apply to Macs and which send you off doing things that don't work. The last time our Internet wasn't working, a tech person came to our house, didn't fix it, tried to, but left a modem, which turned out not to be for our system, something I had to figure out for myself, and then Verizon set a replacement modem to the wrong address and finally sent a third modem, which also didn't work. I got it working when I learned from a neighbor on SEPTA that I should try to upgrade the software for my initial modem. That worked. But, the problem, every time any of the workers came, they were told they were only allowed to do certain things. The worst thing is feeling like really we have no choice. As a recently retired person, having to spend as much money as we have to, to be able to get the landline or Internet, or is really outrageous. So, I'm just really asking you all to try to do something that's, that's a better protection for, you know, a real, a real option for working people on all sides of the issue.
Thank you for your testimony. And we will, and we will continue to push for information and data for, you know, to provide for the city of Philadelphia. Clerk?
Hurry up. I can still say good morning. So, thank you, council members, for holding this hearing, and as you can see, when you got to the public comment portion, Verizon chose to walk out the door. So, before I get started, I want to point out something. It'll be very simple for all of you guys. Edward Mooney, International Vice President of the Communications Workers of America. And the representative of these five ladies and gentlemen here who are sitting in the audience, listening to a similar line that we get at a bargaining table that you just got from them, where they can't answer anything, can't provide anything, and you heard it all. So, I do want to just point out for you real clearly what you want to ask, and I suggested to the representatives of the city, when you're dealing with these individuals, the question you want to ask them pertaining to this Fios build-out is this: not homes passed, homes available for sale. Because I can pass your house with a 50,000-watt electrical cable, but if I don't run the wire to your home, you're in darkness. That is the point. You want to ask them, what is available for sale? So, if they run that cable from one end of Broad Street to the other, but nothing branches off of it, they are telling you that all those homes from the Navy Yard to City Hall are homes passed, but none of them are available for sale. So, we will communicate that in writing to the city representatives, and for you guys who are still here, that is the question you want to ask. How many are available for sale? Not how many have you passed. They could pass 100,000 and not stop the cable once, because they'll pass 100,000 to run it to one of their executives' homes, but they won't run it to either of yours or mine. That's the question you want to ask. Now, for some last, best, and final comments, which is a term they're used to using, I want to mention some things to you about the negotiations, since it was brought up, and why myself and these five people you see here on strike today, and have been. And I'm sorry that Mr. Smith, the arrogant person that he is, chose to leave the room, because in his comments, while he mentions to you the wages and benefits that we enjoy, which we are not ashamed of, we are proud to myself having fought for them for over 28 years, and these individuals fight for them every day in this labor movement against this corporation who lied to your face and lies to ours daily, as they lie to their customers. We are proud of that, of the wages and benefits we have, that we are fighting for now. And as you can tell, it's emotional. And as you can tell, it's emotional to me. So let me compose myself and introduce you to the high school graduates in this room that he demeaned in a response to Councilman Heenan when he said, "Our wages and benefits that they provide," which is inaccurate, is that we fight for year after year. We are proud of that, being the high school graduates that we are, and it's through the labor movement and organized labor and collective bargaining that we have that, okay? I myself am a high school graduate. I went to five high schools in five years in two states. So as far as I'm concerned, I have a master's degree in a high school education, right? And, and these lonely high school graduates who make this fabulous network work day in and day out, apparently way better than the college graduates they have or the scabs they have trying to replace us today, if you look anywhere out there. We are damn proud of that, and we'll continue fighting for it. So I want to comment on why we're on strike, because they've been making some comments, and we did get a proposal from them last night. Their proposals are absolutely insulting to every working person in the United States of America, when they want to take 5,000 call center jobs that are generated right here in the footprint in the northeast United States and send them to Mexico, to the Philippines, or India, rather than employ people right here, some god-awful high school graduates who could get into a labor union and make a good middle-class living for their families for the rest of their lives. That's why we're on strike here in the northeast and why they have no one available to do this work. It happens not to be the reason why it isn't completed. We in the union, as well as City Council, have been trying for years to work with them, to help them obtain the permits. Their arrogance and their ignorance and their refusal to accept the workforce that they have that does this work for them every day is the reason that it isn't completed, and it's the reason that they can't grow the city of Philadelphia. It's their blatant refusal to use, these ladies and gentlemen you see here, as well as the assistance of this union, to complete this build-out. They are busy doing other things, which is investing their money in other areas or other countries, rather than investing in the city of Philadelphia and all the local communities across the northeast footprint where they derive their customer base from. They are now limited to only the northeast United States, okay? This is where they derive their customer base, and we believe this is where they should derive their workforce, and this is where they should be reinvesting in these communities so that we don't hear people sitting here saying, "In one area of the city, my child who wants to go to school can't get access to this, while in another area we can, and certainly in their areas," or, "I don't know about the one area, I'm not very good at a Boston accent, but it sounded to me like he wasn't from the Navy Yard, he was from some other yacht." Okay? So bring somebody here who can say Navy Yard, not Boston Yard, okay? So we appreciate City Council and the city of Philadelphia for everything you are doing to hold them accountable and hold their feet to the fire, and we can assure you, we appreciate all of your support, as well as the gentleman's support standing at that railing there, who is one from some of the finest police squads in the United States of America, who helps us enforce our rights to be on strike and to protest against this corporation who refuses to sit down and negotiate a contract to continue good family-sustaining, middle-class jobs in this community and across the northeast for high school graduates, and we're proud of it. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Mooney, on that emotional response. I just want to say that as a councilperson here representing a lot of the workers out there, I mean, it's refreshing to see the support and the will to actually go out there and work and make this thing happen, and I think from council's perspective, I know with the gentlemen here and all the members of council, we'll continue to work to make sure that we get this project done, we do the right thing, and hopefully, at the end of the day, I believe that the workers will be happy to go back to work and make sure that, you know, we do provide a good sustaining family wage that we can be proud of. So thank you.
If every high school graduate could get you guys to represent them, there probably wouldn't be many people in college. But on a more serious note, the, this hearing has been extremely helpful, and the helpful information didn't come from our witnesses in the beginning. It came from answers to questions and from our last witness, a last witness before the comment, your successor or one of your successors in the local union, so...
They pushed me over to the national union.
Because if you really want to find out what is going on, ask the people that are actually doing the work.
Correct.
And so we know a lot more than we knew walking in here, and I think it'll go a long way to this being a more honest process and a more verifiable process. The, whether you are or aren't built out, it's taken on a whole new meaning for me. It seems like it's a simple term, but everything is definitional as to what, how you define something, and I think our interest is in a broader definition, a more specific definition, rather than the looser definition that has, you know, has many loopholes in it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to compliment you, Councilman. You have a fine employee from your office who sat back there in the hearing, was very attentive. She did a fine job.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. And Mr. Mooney, thank you for your testimony. I want to thank all of you who are here today, and, you know, no wonder, no wonder, as I look around this room, a lot of friends and family, but you guys are the fabric, you guys and girls are the fabric of the city of Philadelphia, you know, working the state middle-class America. No wonder Verizon is experiencing a $36 billion profit. It's on the backs of you, so I want to thank you. I want to thank you, I want to thank you for what you do every day, and, you know, you can count on our support of this body and in support of fair wages and fair benefits, because you live it every day. And I want to thank you for being here to help, to help clear up a lot of misinformation that has been put out there when it comes to data requests and when it comes to the insults, you know, that I know you share, you know, with dealing with this company. But I think at the end of the day, we all want to make sure that what you do every day, working on our 911 system, right, and our first responders, I mean, that's important to the city of Philadelphia. It's important to our country. So, you know, we appreciate that, and we're going to push forward for the information so you could do your job respectfully, and you can retire respectfully, and you can have healthcare to provide for your family. So we will not give up, all right? This committee is about, the hearing is about to end. Is there anyone else here that wishes to testify on resolution number 160156 today? That being none, this concludes our joint meeting today, and I want to thank you all again. This hearing will be recessed at the call of the chair.